Okay, uh, thank you and welcome to, uh, the special meeting, uh, at, uh, five thirty today, June fifth, um, city council, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre.
Present.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Mayor Candell.
I am here.
And I'll know Vice Mayor Way is absent.
Okay, uh, and with that, we'll move into item number two, proclamations. Uh, the first proclamation that we have is a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June two thousand twenty-four to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Do we have an actual proclamation for that that I should be reading?
Packet, but there's not a physical copy.
Okay, so with that, uh, I will declare this, uh, National, uh, Gun Awareness Awareness Day, and, uh, we may come back to that after the closed session, uh, if I have a printout of that and, uh, we can read it out. Does that sound fair?
Before you're done with the other proclamation.
Okay, so we're gonna, we'll push that back until, uh, a little bit later on this agenda, uh, and instead we will go to the proclamation retiring, uh, honoring retiring teachers of the Larkspur Corte Madera School District. Okay, so, um, let me take a minute, uh, and first explain why we're doing this, uh, and, uh, it's really just to say thank you, uh, and to acknowledge, uh, the importance of teachers in our, uh, in our district and, um, to recognize you and thank you for everything that you've done, uh, because I think teachers sometimes go, uh, less recognized than they should. Having said that, um, I have a bunch of these, I'd like to, uh, have these read and I'll pass them out, we'll all read a couple, uh, and, uh, will, as I am, uh, first time I'm doing this, I don't know, do we have people stand up or do I just read them and whatever I want to do? Okay.
In charge.
So I, I will, uh, read them, I'll, I'll announce the person it's for and I will read it, uh, and then you can come up and get it and then we'll go through, um, uh, for everybody who's here, for people who are not here, we'll get them to them a separate way. Um, so, uh, Janet Pollak, are you here? Okay, well Janet, I'd like to re- read a city proclamation for you, whereas Janet Pollak has served our community for an amazing thirty-three years as a respected, beloved and dedicated teacher of the Larkspur Corte Madera School District. And whereas on this occasion, it is fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Janet's commitment to the district and most importantly to its students. And whereas Janet is always cognizant and shares with others her wisdom that in the, that in the teaching endeavor, one must always focus on why teachers exist. It's because of the children. She always puts the children first. And whereas Janet has shown commitment to her profession and to the community in which she has taught, and whereas Janet has committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement, and whereas Janet, Janet's advocacy of high standards in education has brought state recognition to the Larkspur Corte Madera School District and Neil Cummins School, having earned the well-deserved and elite title of California Distinguished School, and whereas Janet has made significant improvements to the lives of the students and their families at Neil Cummins Elementary School, and whereas Janet has been known to have students come home from school very happy during their first week of fourth grade and say, "Learning is so much fun." And whereas our community recognized Janet in her tireless efforts to educate the children of Larkspur and Corte Madera, now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city council of the city of Larkspur, on the occasion of her retirement, we celebrate with gratitude her lasting impact on the community and legacy of academic excellence. Okay, is it Lisa Matthews here? Liza, uh, and is that yes? Okay, did you read Liza's?
Can I read that?
Sure.
I, I know Liza from my son Finn is in her art class, so this one is especially meaningful. Whereas Liza Matthews has served our community for thirty-one years as a respected, beloved and dedicated, dedicated teacher of Larkspur Corte Madera School District, and whereas on this occasion, it's fizzing, fit, fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Liza's commitment to the district and most importantly to her students, whereas Liza has been described as highly regarded throughout the county, um, student-centered educational leader who's passionate about her work and has served as a mentor to new teachers and to other staff members, whereas Liza has shown commitment to her profession and the community in which she's taught, and whereas Liza's committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement, whereas Liza's advocacy of high standards in education has brought state recognition to the Larkspur Corte Madera School District and Neil Cummins School, having earned the well-deserved and elite title of a California Distinguished School, and whereas Liza's made significant improvements in the lives of her students and their families at Neil Cummins School, and whereas Liza most, uh, most recent work has focused on arts education, which has been a huge success. Prior to that, among her many contributions, she has taught after-school classes and made connections through tutoring, whereas Liza is committed to continuous ed and training on issues related to student achievement, and our community recognizes her tireless effort to educate the children of Larkspur and Corte Madera, now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city council of the city of Larkspur, on the occasion of her retirement, we celebrate with gratitude, gratitude her lasting impact on our community and legacy of academics, academic excellence. Thank you. And I have to say, I, I actually, I got to be in the class with her, so I was there teaching, all this is true.
Is Katie Hooper here? Okay.
Whereas, whereas Katie Hooper has served our community for fourteen and a half years as a respected, beloved and dedicated staff member of the district office, serving in many capacities of the Larkspur Corte Madera School District as Student Services Specialist. This included supporting the Senior Director of Student Services and Technology and Director of Special Education. And whereas, on this occasion, it is fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Katie's commitment to the district and most importantly its students. And whereas Katie has been described as being an amazing support to the entire Special Education Department and an intricate part of their success in the district and throughout the county. She goes above and beyond to support the team, is kind, empathetic, supportive, collaborative, and a data guru. And whereas Katie has navigated her many responsibilities such as cow pads reporting, English language updates, LCAP orders, CRDC reports, SEIS records, and annual parent updates are all duties required for due districts to operate and all happen because of her thoroughness, care, and attention to detail. And whereas Katie has made significant improvements to the lives of the students and their families, and whereas Katie has enrolled nearly two thousand students and seen many numerous parents through the process while always being compassionate, patient, and understanding, now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city council of the city of Larkspur, on the occasion of her retirement, we celebrate with gratitude her lasting impact to our community and legacy of supportive excellence. Congratulations.
Is, uh, Mary Ann O'Keefe here? Not today? Okay, I'll hold on to that one. Is Lori Restani here? Okay Lori. Whereas Lori Restani has served our community for twenty years as a respected, beloved and dedicated teacher of the Larkspur Corte Madera School District, and whereas on this occasion, it's fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Lori's commitment to the district and most importantly to its students. And whereas Lori has been described as caring deeply about the welfare of her students and the planet. Her students have benefited from her wealth of knowledge and her passion for the natural world. And whereas Lori is committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement, and where Lori, whereas Lori's advocacy of high standards in education has brought state recognition to the Larkspur Corte Madera School District and to Neil Cummins School, having earned the well-deserved and elite title of California Distinguished School, and whereas Lori has made significant improvements to the lives of the students and their families at the Neil Cummins Elementary School, and whereas Lori's students state that she likes every subject she teaches, and she loves to teach themes in her classes. Her main highlights of teaching are every year at the end of the year when she sees her graduates move from her class to the next grade, and whereas Lori loves reading and writing in her class, whereas Lori is committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement, and whereas Lori, our community recognizes, whereas our community recognizes Lori in her tireless efforts to educate the children of Larkspur and Corte Madera, now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city councils of the city of Larkspur, on the occasion of her retirement, we celebrate with gratitude her lasting impact on the community and legacy of academic excellence. Is, uh, Vincenza Costa here? Okay.
Whereas, whereas Vincenza Costa has served our community for the last eight years as a respected, beloved and dedicated staff member in different capacities of the Larkspur Corte Madera School District, the last five of which were as a paraprofessional. And whereas on this occasion, it is fitting to pause and reflect in appreciation of Vincenza's commitment to the district and most importantly its students. And whereas Vincenza has been described as loving to connect with others, she is always cheerful and smiling while greeting people each morning, making a pleasant work environment for all. And whereas Vincenza, am I, am I pronouncing that properly? Ventenza, I, sorry. Whereas Vincenza is committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. And whereas for the school community, Vincenza has joined several committees, district advisory panel, equity leadership team, and Cove's PBIS team, and she is a lifelong learner. And whereas Vincenza has had significant, has made significant improvements to the lives of the students and their families at the Cove School, and her passion is contagious. And whereas Vincenza is committed to continuous education and training on issues related to student achievement. And whereas most of all, she is caring and compassionate toward Cove's students, now therefore be it proclaimed that on behalf of the city council of the city of Larkspur, on the occasion of her retirement, we celebrate with gratitude her lasting impact on our community and legacy of academic excellence.
Uh, is Kathleen here? Okay, is, did I miss anyone? Okay. I'm sorry? Okay, so I have Mary Ann and Kathleen's, uh, and I'll just ask, uh, what would be the appropriate? Okay, so, so just, uh, hang on, for, for the record, let, let me just, uh, say that, that we as a city council, um, appreciate Mary Ann O'Keefe and Kathleen. Anyone want to help me with your last name? One more time? Asher Tegerei. Um, so we, we want to recognize and appreciate Mary Ann and Kathleen for their hard work and dedication. Mary Ann has been with us for, for seventeen and a half years, Kathleen for sixteen years, uh, and on behalf of the city council, um, we'd like to, uh, recognize, uh, their retirement and celebrate, uh, with gratitude everything that they've done for our community. And with that, I see we have magically, uh, uh, found a forum for, uh, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So if anybody would like to stay for that, you are welcome to, not, uh, not necessary if you don't want, um, but I will now, uh, read a city proclamation, yes. Absolutely. What, what do I, can I put this over till after? All right, I'm gonna put gun awareness day on after this, uh, and we will adjourn this part of the meeting and go into closed session, uh, unless there's a reason I can't. Well, we can adjourn the meeting first, right? We'll adjourn the meeting and then we'll take some photos and then we'll go to closed session. Good? Okay. Okay, uh, welcome.
So Mr. Mary, you need to report, we're out of closed session.
Um, welcome, we are out of closed session and we have no reportable information from that closed session. With that in mind, uh, we will begin our regular meeting. Uh, welcome to the regular meeting, let's start with a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andre.
Present.
Councilmember Paulson.
Present.
Mayor Candell.
I am here. Uh, with that in mind, I don't see it on, oh, there it is, pledge allegiance, if you are able, please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Okay, next on the agenda, and before we start, I'll just say we have, uh, something left over on the agenda, uh, which I will put to the end, because I don't think anybody here is for that. Um, next we have public comment, public comment are for matters not on the agenda. Uh, can I see, but since we have a full house, uh, show of hands, how many people here for public comment? Okay, not too many, so don't need a strict time limit, we'll stick to the normal three minutes, whoever wants to come up, feel free to, uh, come up and please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Bob Mittelstead, I'm a co-founder with Jonathan Freeman of a group called E-Bike Access. Um, I want to talk later about the grand jury response, but, uh, this is on a separate topic. It's what we call the Super Seventy-three Project. Uh, I think everybody is aware of the throttle bikes the kids are riding around the streets. Um, the most popular brand is Super Seventy-three. What we know about them is that they're responsible for the high accident rate for ten to fifteen-year-olds. It's five times higher than any other age group. Most popular version, it's not the only one that's illegal, but it's the Super Seventy-three, and they're illegal because to be a Class Two e-bike with a throttle, the motor has to cut off at twenty miles per hour, and these go by using their app, um, they go thirty to thirty-five, so they're illegal. Everybody agrees with that now. On April sixteen, Chief Norton told the Tam Union High School District trustees that Super Seventy-threes are illegal, uh, and they're not going to be allowed anymore, and after two-week grace period, they're going to start enforcing it, and he recommended that the schools have a registration program and ban them. That's April sixteen. May third, Chief Norton, joined by three other police chiefs, sent a letter to school parents saying the same thing, except, um, he took out Super Seventy-three and put in one popular brand. Uh, I don't know why he did that, but I think it kind of sounds to me like a lawyer got a hold of it. The problem with that is, then I talked to, uh, Brett Geithman, Superintendent of Larkspur Schools, and I said, uh, Mr. Super, or Doctor, I guess he is, uh, when are you going to ban Super Seventy-threes? And he said, "Well, the chief backed off and didn't name them." And so I'm not gonna ban them if the chief didn't ban them. So they're kind of going back and forth. I, I know a lot about e-bikes, I don't know the first thing about how local government works, but we've got a situation here where the school board isn't doing anything, and, and you have twenty illegal bikes at Hall Middle School, fourteen of them are Super Seventy-threes, you have ten electric scooters, which are illegal without a driver's license, that's existing law. Chief of Police, apparently at the advice of the lawyer, is not telling the public that it's Super Seventy-threes, although they're gonna start enforcing the, the law and impounding Super Seventy-three.
Let, let me, let me ask, uh, a question, because this is on the consent calendar, that we're gonna pull off the consent calendar to have a conversation about it. We can't have a conversation with it about, during public comment.
Okay.
So I'm gonna suggest, I mean, I'd like to engage with you about this, I can't right now.
Okay.
So if we can put this on hold until, uh, it comes on the agenda, then I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
That's good, let me just give you my punchline.
Okay.
My punchline is, whatever you do with the grand jury report, uh, I would encourage you all to have a meeting with the Board of Trustees, representative with the, uh, school superintendent and with the police chief, and figure out how to get Super Seventy-threes and the electric scooters and the other illegal e-bikes out of our schools. And while everybody's pointing the fingers, the people at risk here are the students, and, and they deserve better than to have, you know, various aspects of government pointing the fingers.
No.
I'll be back.
I, I, I agree with you and, but I can't
Got it.
Comment on it right now, so let's, let's, let's come back to that over the, uh, on the consent calendar. Okay, other public comments, again, these are things that are not on the agenda. Uh, the rent control is on the agenda, uh, so, so why don't we, why don't we wait on that, and that way we can have a conversation about it, because right now, it's just a, you to inform us about things for future agendas. Okay? Uh, any other comments for i- items not on the agenda? Okay, so, uh, with that, was there somebody? Yes, come on up.
Sure, we're not sure if this is on the agenda or not on the agenda, so.
What, what's the topic?
So i- it's the
The chamber.
Chamber budget, again.
Uh, is the chamber budget on the agenda?
Budgets.
Okay, so i- it is, um, and again, if, if you want to speak for a minute or two, we can't comment, but if you would like to have more of an interactive exchange, it's on the agenda, we'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Yeah, we'd just like to plead our case again in terms of getting more of the allotted M- TOT money for our budget.
Okay, so why, why don't we do that, if you're comfortable, stick around, we're gonna get to that when we talk about the budget, uh, but like I said, we can't have a conversation about it right now.
Understood.
Is that okay? All right. Other things not on the agenda, anybody wants to comment on? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I will go to presentations, uh, presentations, which there is one, but I'm gonna put that to the end, because we got a, uh, crowded house here, don't wanna, uh, keep people waiting longer than, than we need to. Next we get to the consent calendar, okay, and, uh, I guess we're back to the e-bike. So on the consent calendar, is there anybody who would like to discuss an item on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, are you pulling the consent calendar item that was requested to be pulled? If so, it's moved to the business calendar.
Got it, okay, so, uh, I have been corrected, so not yet. So, we will pull, uh, i- item, is that four point nine? Four point nine off of the consent calendar, and we will discuss that as a business item. Uh, and for those of you who are not following that, that's the approval of the city's response, uh, to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled with Power Comes Responsibility: Youth Under Age Sixteen Operating Class Two E-Bikes. So we will, uh, discuss that as a business item. Is there anything else on the consent calendar? Let me start with, uh, council, is there anyone, anything else on consent calendar anybody would like to discuss or pull? Is there anything else, uh, that anybody else, uh, would like to discuss on the consent calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the consent calendar minus four point nine?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, consent calendar passes, item's four point one through four point eight. Uh, next, item five on the agenda is the city manager's report. Mr. City Manager, what do you got for us?
I'm gonna be very simple, do more of a housekeeping matter, uh, for you and the public, uh, wanted to make sure the public's aware, the council has scheduled a special meeting for June seventeen, uh, to take up a variety of item, business items, in part because, uh, the council intends to be dark for what would have been its regular meeting on June nineteenth in recognition of the federal holiday that the city recognizes, the Juneteenth holiday. The council's also opted to be dark for July third and due to its proximity to, uh, the July Fourth holiday. So, um, after the special meeting on June seventeenth, the council won't have a regular meeting until July seventeen. I want to note that June seventeen is a Monday, so it's a different day than we normally hold, uh, our council meeting. So that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I'm gonna give you tonight.
Okay, well, thank you for that public information. Uh, moving to item six, council members' oral reports. Uh, anyone have a oral report they'd like to give this evening?
I'll be brief. Um, yeah, just a few things. So, um, mostly transportation, uh, just a reminder that on June twentieth, uh, we'll be starting the Smart Shuttle. So one of the issues with the Smart is, you know, the last mile solution, so there's now a shuttle that'll be taking people to the ferry and also an on-demand, kind of like Lyft or Uber. Uh, so I, I invite you all to, you know, keep your eyes open and hopefully that'll make it more useful. I know e-bikes are gonna be on the agenda, that's something that Tam is looking at pretty closely. Um, part of our effort on, on the Transportation Authority Marin is looking at what the state is doing and there are four bills, uh, AB fourteen, well, I won't read the numbers off, but one's, um, a sales prohibition, another one's an age limit on Class Two, another one's an, uh, age limit on operation, and another one's a labels classification. So I, I think we'll be discussing this tonight, but just know that, you know, as Larkspur representation, we're really trying to see that the state also standardizes this for everybody. Um, and last, kind of on a, on a, you know, ceremonial note, today is, uh, the eightieth anniversary of, of, um, of D-Day, and I just feel every time I pledge allegiance, I don't forget that, uh, we lost about seventy-three thousand people, so it's just, um, a reminder why we say the pledge, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, very quickly, uh, the Larkspur Community Foundation is hosting the Rose Bowl Dance, which is, um, coming back after a long hiatus, and tickets are available and on sale at the Larkspur Community Foundation, uh, website. There'll be dinner, uh, there'll be food, live music and dancing, and, um, I encourage, um, Larkspur citizens to get out there and it, it should be a good time, and, uh, you will be supporting the Larkspur Community Foundation.
Okay, and just, uh, on that note, just a reminder, every Friday, there is music in the park, uh, we've had two so far, they've been, uh, pretty successful. Um, sell beer and wine there and, uh, good bands, so we welcome everybody to come join us, uh, Friday nights. And with that, I will close, uh, item six, council members' reports, uh, move to public hearings. Uh, and, uh, public hearings, we have a few tonight, the first, uh, is budgetary, seven point one fiscal year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five capital improvements program and budget. Seven point one A, you want me to do, uh, A by itself, or would you like to take it from here, sir?
Uh, if you want, and let me give you, I'll be happy to do the housekeeping structure for
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so it's been our practice over the years to do four meetings to cover the breadth of our budget issues. This is the fourth and, uh, hopefully final meeting, uh, in which you've been asked now to consider the final budget and also the final capital improvement program. These two documents work together to serve as the guidelines and planning documents for the city's operations for the upcoming year. Um, throughout this presentation, uh, and it's been very brief, most presentations are refresher on the capital improvement program, because we made some changes there. Um, everything is still in play for you, although we put together a final book, we can easily change that, we've tried to make it look pretty and, and finalized, but it's amendable, so, uh, we look forward to any direction you give us through the course of the public hearing. Uh, this is considered one public hearing ultimately to take up both documents. You have the option to take up the entire slate of resolutions in one, uh, action, should you so choose at the end of your deliberations with any amendments you may or may not want to make. So that can help you perhaps as you want to move to the end and streamline it. Um, as you can see, Mr. Skinner, Public Works Director is present, he's gonna, uh, kick us off, if, uh, that's all right with the mayor, and just do a quick refresher on where we are with the capital improvement program discussion, um, and then I'll do some very quick highlights on the budget.
Absolutely, okay, seven point one A, uh, capital improvements. Uh, Mr. Skinner, what do you got for us?
All right, good evening, I have a brief presentation, this is a kind of a summary, a rolled-up version of what I presented that, uh, at your last meeting. Um, and so, uh, as the city manager explained, there are a number of resolutions. Um, and so, uh, as the city manager explained, there are a number of resolutions that we're going to ask you to adopt, uh, tonight as part of the budget. One of those is approving the five-year capital improvement program. Um, and specifically the funding allocations for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, this is the summary of the proposed funds for the, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, three point eight five. Uh, million in total, um, and mostly restricted, uh, revenue funds for capital projects. Um, this is the matrix that shows where all of those, um, funds are proposed to go. So the, uh, column in red here is your rolled up, uh, proposed funding allocation for next fiscal year per project. Um, and then the columns further over show the specific funding source, um, be it measure C, measure B, gas tax. Or whatever, um, are listed out here. Um, and so we broke it up into three. This first slide here shows you the building. Projects that we discussed last time. So there's Hall Middle School, the railroad building and the city hall renovation, um, study proposed. Um, the next grouping of projects is our parks projects. These are, uh, not new projects or projects that have been in the C I P before. But they're proposed for new funding in twenty-four, twenty-five. That's Greenberry School Park and the Piper Park, uh, parking lot improvements. Um, and then the last is your, um, transportation drainage and utility projects. Um, so we've got a number, uh, of new projects here, eight new projects with, uh, new funding. Uh, one continuing project, which is our bike and pad and ADA upgrades that we, uh, put seed funding in, um, every year for. Um, improvements. Um, and again, um, the red column here is the, uh, total funding for each one of these. Uh, projects and then the funding sources in the subsequent columns. Um, there is one change that is noted in the staff report. It's not highlighted here because it's not actually. You're not taking action on it tonight, uh, but we did when we did a reconciliation of funds. Uh, note that there's some, um, American Rescue Plan Act funds that, uh, as you know, we've, uh, programmed into storm drain projects previously. Uh, we did an accounting of how those funds have been spent and, uh, how we were going to spend them previously. Um, and there's about four hundred and fifty thousand of, uh, those ARPA funds, um, that we believe we can apply to, uh, another storm drain. Project. So, uh, one of the issues with the ARPA funding is it has to be allocated to a project. Or actually it has to be obligated within a project, which means we need to have a contract awarded to a contractor before December. Uh, thirty-first of this year. So at this point, we don't know which project we want to send that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards. We've got a couple of candidates. So, uh, there's a note in the staff report that says we'll be coming to you with a budget amendment sometime in the next fiscal year. Um, to assign that money to whichever of those eligible projects gets awarded to a contractor first. Um, and if that money is needed because we get a high bid, then it'll go towards that project. Um, but if, um, the bids come in for that project as estimated, then, uh, we will. Use that ARPA money into the project and it will relieve some measure B funds that were already programmed into those, uh, projects. Uh, that's really the only change, but again, it doesn't change your action tonight because we're not requesting that money at this point because we don't know which project to. Assign it to you, but you will see that, um, as a budget amendment in the next, uh, fiscal year. And, uh, wrap up with, this is a list of, um, unfunded projects that, uh, we maintain. And that, um, we take a look at every time there's a grant call for projects out there. There's a, a funding agency that has money for specific projects. We, uh, look through this list to see if anything is a, isn't a good match for, um, any of the grants, um, that are out there. Um, so that's kind of the recap of the, the capital program. And again, there is a resolution, um, attached with this. That I think typically you take up at the end of the, the whole budget discussion. So I'm available for, um, any questions.
Okay. So let's stick right now, uh, to capital improvements. Does anyone, uh, on the dais and council members have any questions for staff on this?
I have two quick questions. One, um, on the, the storage facility, the, the four hundred thousand. That's not been bid out yet, correct? That's just an estimate at this time on what you think it might cost to fix up that building.
Yeah, that's a placeholder. The, um, what we're requesting this year is the fifty thousand to do the study. We're showing a placeholder in a future year that it may cost three hundred and fifty thousand to do that upgrade. Uh, so with this, with this, um, adoption, you're approving the plan that says we're looking at spending that money. But you're not approving us spending that extra three hundred and fifty thousand at this point. With adoption of the budget, you're only approving the fifty thousand to look at it. And then obviously, as we do that fifty thousand dollar study, that extra three hundred and fifty thousand number will go up or down depending on what that, uh, study shows. But it's, it's a placeholder.
And how dire is that situation?
Um, it's there. Well, so there, the roof issue is something that, uh, will need to be fixed. Or we'll need to consider other options for what's in the building. It's something that we're patching and it's just not sustainable in the long term. So there's a component of it that we're, we're going to need to do, or we're going to have to find somewhere else to put all the material that's in that building. The improving it for storage is what we anticipate we're going to need for our, uh, future, future needs.
It's so, let me ask you a question this way. If we ask you to postpone the review for another year. Is that a reasonable request?
I mean, it's not super critical. It just, we may incur costs over the next year that we would not be able to recover. If we have to go and make more repairs on the roof.
Okay.
Uh, and if we end up repair, replacing that roof in the future, then the repairs that we would make over the next season will have, you know, been for naught.
Okay, great. I do have more comments on those, but that answered my questions. Thank you.
Uh, any questions, Councilmember?
Not right now. Thanks.
Okay. So let me open this up, uh, to the public, uh, and I'm going to try to compartmentalize this. So right now, we're just talking about the capital improvements. Anyone from the public have any questions for staff? Comments regarding our capital improvements? Come on up.
Hello, hello. Uh, my name is Alsy. Uh, I'm a resident of Green Bay. Uh, for years I've been, uh, communicating with, uh, city of Larkspur, trying to request a sidewalk. To be built in front of our community, uh, from pretty much, uh, Rich Street. Down to the pathway and hopefully down to the Green Bay Boardwalk. This sidewalk is going to benefit more than a hundred homes. Um, most, a lot of our residents are senior citizens, uh, that live in the, in our communities. Uh, we have children that use this, uh, public Eastman at this moment. That at moments becomes dangerous for everybody because there's, uh, inconsiderate drivers or park. Uh, on the public, public Eastman and obstructs our, our, uh, way of travel. Um, uh, including mine. Um, and I'm really passionate about this because this is my neck. Like, this is an X-ray and this is something that I have in the back. I have metal, so I have, uh, problems walking. So it's an ADA hazard. Um, and also because, uh, this, this, this area is really dangerous for our, our neighbors. I have a friend that was walking with a friend who, uh, ended up falling because of the dangerous condition of our, our sidewalk. Currently at this location, uh, the sidewalk has been fixed, but the new design prevents, uh. The easy travel of people to go, uh, to Trader Joe's or Bedmo. Because the current, uh, crosswalk from the west side of Redwood, the new pathway onto the east side. Uh, it's gonna, has a curb that is about a foot tall and it also has a handrail. So it prevents wheel, people on wheelchair to continue. Going straight. So they have to go into the sidewalk and there is no crosswalk to the other side of the. Uh, the street from the Marine Park, uh, residences. And also that there is, uh, an ADA ramp where the, uh, bridge lands. But it's currently, in order to get to that, it's, uh, pretty far away from where people have to walk into the streets. And there's a blind curb and there's usually cars speeding down the, the, the street. And it's just, uh, uh, hazard for, uh, our residents. We currently have people who are ninety-five years old. That can barely walk, that have wheelchairs.
Alright, so, so let me. Let me stop you for a second. Uh, Mr. Skinner, are you familiar with the area that we're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, can you comment from your perspective? Is there a sidewalk there? Is this something that could benefit our community? Um, but what, what are your thoughts about that?
So we've recently completed a multi-use path, which is for bicycles and pedestrians on the west side of the street. That the gentleman is describing. Um, on the east side, um, the roadway is paved wider than the. Where the vehicles travel. So there is excess, um, asphalt beyond the roadway that people either park on or walk on. There's no definitive sidewalk in that location, um, north of, of Rich Street.
And, and is that, is that the area that you're talking about?
This is the area that, uh, that I'm talking about.
And this is the area you're saying we would benefit by having a sidewalk.
Yes, and, uh, our beloved city councilman, Kevin Carroll, was something, that was something that he was pursuing as well. And I would like this project to be considered in his honor.
Okay. A- a- and, um, again, we're not going to decide this today. But, uh, is that something that we can put on a potential capital improvements to look into it? To see if it would make sense to have a sidewalk there, if there, what the engineering logistical problems might be and, and, and things like that?
So it can certainly go on that last slide that I had that was unfunded projects. But historically, cities do not construct and pay for sidewalks. They're either built by developers or private property owners. Or they are built with grant funds. So for example, the wide sidewalks on Dority Drive were built with grant funds. The multi-use path I just spoke of that's on the west side was built with grant funds. There was no city funds in that project. Um, there is a grant application we are currently working on that would include the sidewalk. That the gentleman is requesting in the scope of work for that grant. It's a very competitive grant. Um, we're working on the application now. They go in at the end of June. And, um, if the city is awarded that grant, then that sidewalk, uh, may be part of that project. If the granting agency awards the entire grant amount.
Alright, and Mr. City Manager, you picked up the microphone, which is, you means you have, uh, something to share with us?
Um, the council always could, as Mr. Skinner indicated, uh, requests that we come back to add this to the unfunded project list. So an, an item on the unfunded project list essentially is what Mr. Skinner is referring to. It would be a guideline to staff to keep its eyes out for opportunities to obtain funding for the project. I do want to put a caveat that I think would be important to document considerable pieces of this project are not in the city of Larkspur. So it's a multi-jurisdictional project. Pieces of it are in the county. There may be Caltrans issues that need to be resolved. So it's a bigger project than it sounds like because of that.
Okay. So with, with that in mind, um, if, uh, the council agrees. Uh, maybe we can put that on the unfunded project list just so that we can have it, uh, on the radar so that we can apply for grants. And, and look for potential ways to fund it, uh, cooperation from other jurisdictions, you know, whatever seems to be necessary.
I just want one clarification. Um, so I, I'd need to go down there. I mean, I ride on the, the west side frequently. I walked a little bit on the east side. Um, has the west side, I guess I'm directing this to our city, um. Uh, Public Works Director, i- is, is there a, um, a way to cross over and to use the west side? Uh, or is it, I mean, what, what is, what is that completed north-south greenway path done for the situation? You know, is, is, is there a way to utilize that in the interim? Because I, I can imagine this is not going to happen in, in the next year or two, no matter what.
There is a marked crosswalk at Rich, which is the southern, um, end of the gap that is being described.
Okay.
There is no, uh, marked crosswalk, um, at the north end. But there is, um, a pedestrian ramp on the west side, um, so that there is ADA access, um, to get onto the new pathway. Um, at the north end of.
Would a marked crosswalk on the north side, you know, possibly pass our safety matrix for crosswalks? And make this, uh, you know, an alternative bypass?
Um, we would have to be evaluated by our traffic engineer because it's on a, on a curve to make sure there's sufficient, um.
Okay. Cause I just suggest that as an interim solution, you know, I, I definitely appreciate your comment and I, I know the community well. And I'm, I'm thinking, say, we could magically do this in one or two years. Maybe there's a cheaper way to get something for you very soon. So if, if we can consider that as a possibility.
Just to add one more thing, uh, for Mr. Skinner, it seems like it could be, uh, uh, a combination of funds. It sounds like, uh, the private owners can also, uh, contribute to the sidewalk. It doesn't just have to be the public grants from the government. It sounds like they also have some responsibility for the pedestrians. To have, uh, a safe passage for people to walk in front of the properties. Yeah. Currently, currently some of these areas are being used as, uh, private parking, blocking our, our public Eastmans.
I, I think that's, that's valid. Uh, and I think that part of the things putting it on this list will bring it to our attention. Which would look, have us looking to public grants, but also private funding as well. I mean, it basically takes it from obscurity and puts it on the list of things that we want to accomplish. It's not going to be accomplished tomorrow.
No.
Which is why, uh, Councilmember Paulson's idea of a potential crosswalk may be a, a interim solution to make things easier. Until, you know, we're able to, to find funding for this. So I, I tend to agree with that as well. Uh, I don't know, uh, what kind of study would be necessary, but maybe we can put that on a, a wishlist of things to do as well.
Yeah, just a word of caution, the mid-block crossing that you're describing requires a pretty significant safety and risk analysis. So again, not as small a scale solution as Councilmember Paulson's comments might suggest to the public.
This, my neighbor and friend ended up dying from, uh, internal bleeding and block clots on so many falls. At dislocations.
Sorry to hear that.
He was ninety years old.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it, it sounds like a serious problem that we should, we should deal with. So, uh, yeah, so I, that's if, if council is on the same page. Maybe we put that on the unfunded projects list, uh, and, uh, we can, uh, discuss how to figure out if a crosswalk could even be possible there. Because as you're saying, it may not be logistically possible.
We're aware of the public interest. I'm sure Mr. Skinner will put it through his rigorous analysis.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, any other comments on unfunded projects? Okay, bring it back to council. Uh, any other comments on unfunded projects before we move on?
Yeah, just a, a small one. I, I, I'm, I'm wondering if this is the, uh, appropriate line of funding. But I had mentioned before the, um, you know, the i- idea of radar signs and, and, you know, updating those. And I'm wondering if that is something, you know, we should bookmark or is that anything we can talk about tonight?
Um, those, um, are there, they, we do have that, uh, project that I mentioned before. That we put the money in each year that we evaluate, um, minor pedestrian, bicycle and ADA improvement. Requests that we get. And so we look through the, uh, fiscal year and see what requests we have. And the goal is to spend that money because you allocated it there for those reasons. And so, um, the radar feedback signs are something that have been on our list. Um, we were fortunate that CNPA, um, actually purchased some recently. Um, that were kind of a newer, a newer style, um, where they're, they're mountable, but they're also movable. The mount kind of stays behind. So you can buy one radar sign and multiple mountings and you can, uh, move it around. So, um, we were checking in with them on, on whether that was a, a better model than the traditional ones. Like you see in front of, um, the, actually the CNPA building where they're just freestanding signs. Um, the other opportunity for that is there is a TAM small project, Safe Pathways to School Grant. That is coming out within the next month or two, and those are geared towards small projects such as, uh, radar feedback signs. So I would say somewhere in between those, um, two avenues, um, there's a likelihood that you'll see us come back to you. With a, a recommendation, um, for a, a few locations throughout town.
Great. Appreciate it. And just, just to be clear, I, I know the wheel-driven radar signs are rather expensive. I'm talking about the ones mounted, which I think are about three thousand. And they have the chip in the back, you know, and solar driven. Is, is that, is that the one you meant?
Yeah, the traditional ones are mounted on a pole. That's like the ones that are in front of, uh, CNPA or in front of Tamascale High School. And those ones are actually solar. Um, and then the latest version that, uh, the police bought are similar to that. Uh, but they mount on a utility pole and there's a bracket that goes on the pole. And then a similar looking radar feedback box goes on that bracket. But then you can pull that off with a special key and go put it on a different pole on a different street. So, um, it's a little bit more versatile than just the pole that's in the ground. But it's not as bulky and cumbersome as the big ones that are on the trailers.
Okay, thank you.
It's also a little bit more than three thousand dollars.
I was looking for discounts.
Okay, so it looks. Okay, so it looks like as we are in agreement on the cap improvement projects at this point, checking in with city attorney, city manager, if it's okay for us to take a vote on that, pass that before we move to the second half of this?
It's not as an option, or you can take all of them up?
Let's, if we have agreement, let's just put this one in the can.
Actually, I have more to say, sorry. So back on the storage, I, I think, you know, since this is my first time on council, I just want to, for everyone's benefit. I feel like when we look at our priority, our spending priorities, I think, one, you know, public health and safety, right? Takes foremost priority, some, some of the things like what we just heard. I think, you know, that's sort of paramount. Secondly, would be, you know, let's look at things that might potentially generate a positive return for the city. And then third, anything that will maintain or improve the quality of life here for, you know, for Larkspur citizens. And so when I'm thinking about that, there are a couple of items here on the CIP I would like to discuss. And some of this rolls into what's in the budget. But with the storage facility, fixing the storage facility, I just feel like, you know, that is something that is very expensive, could potentially cost four hundred thousand dollars. I think we have, you know, sidewalks and other things that we want, that, that should probably take priority over that. So I'd like to be able to just ask staff to maybe postpone the study for another year on that until we, and plus, you know, we are looking at a budget deficit. And then, you know, the wayfinding study, the wayfinding signs. So I've actually worked with a firm on signage in the past, and they did an outstanding job. And I know that this is a project that would really enhance, I think, the aesthetics of our town, but also, you know, serve a very practical purpose, right? Tell me people where, where certain landmarks are. That said, I do feel that, you know, Larkspur's not a huge tourist destination, like maybe perhaps San Francisco might be. And so, you know, I, I don't feel that we definitely need a whole bunch of signs all over the place. I think there's like a, you know, a middle road here for this type of a project. So I feel, you know, two hundred thousand dollars for this type of project feels like a lot of money to me. But what I'd like to do is maybe have staff go out for some estimates and then come back. And then maybe we can revisit this number, so in terms of the budget. So what I, my understanding is we are going to approve this number as sort of like a placeholder. And then when we actually go out and try and get estimates, we might get a better read for, you know, how many signs is this? And where is it going to go? You know, we can refine details on that. But I just, you know, it's just in terms of how we are, because there are, there are things, there are projects that I think, you know, we all, we've got this long unfunded list. And I think there are other things that come up throughout the year. I just want to make sure that we save some funds for, for, you know, these things that come up.
That's fair. So, so let's, let me start with the second thing that you said, which is the, the wayfinding signs. Can I inquire the money that we are putting aside for the wayfinding signs? Is that, is that going to come back to us before we actually spend that money? Or is that, or a study, can you explain that two thousand, the two hundred we're talking about?
So staff anticipated, anticipates issuing a request for proposals for that project. So it would be a request for comprehensive, the study and potentially, I believe, the installation of the signs. So it's, it's from, from the beginning, it's A to Z. We anticipate that would be above staff spending authority. So the results of the RFP would be to bring you a proposal that we felt was the best proposal. So you could give us direction this evening of leaving it in the budget, but indicating that you may elect after you see the RFPs to either partially fund or not fund the project based on where the budget is at that time.
So let me ask Councilmember Andre, are you suggesting we punt the whole thing till next year and not look into the studies? Or are you suggesting we study it and then it comes back to us before we approve it?
Yeah, I think we study it and then it comes back to us for approval. I mean, it sounds like, you know, we would have another, we would have better details at that time or better estimate at that time.
So question for staff, is there anything that we need to do to make sure when we pass this, that there's an understanding that we are authorizing staff to, to get bids on this? But before we actually give a thumbs up on it, we need a vote on that.
No, but your conversation serves as good direction to us to limit our activities at this time to issuing the RFP. And then we'll just wait for the results and have that conversation at that time with the council.
Perfect. Next issue, storage facility. And I think that was four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, so question for the storage facility. If we punt that for a year, what are the additional costs we're going to pay if we do it a year from now as opposed to this year?
Best case scenario, nothing. Worst case scenario, we have issues with the roof we have to repair. But in addition to throw away costs for repairing the roof, if we do have some major roof failure or something that requires us to move the storage out sooner rather than later, then we're going to have third-party storage costs somewhere in the interim that will not be recoverable until we find out if we want to repair the building or not.
So question I have is, why is this in this year's budget? Is it because we feel that there's imminent failure if we don't? Or is it more of a, it's going to happen at some points, we might as well deal with it now?
Sort of twofold, I'm going to jump in because I had requested that this be moved a little more forward for two reasons. One is the city does have storage challenges. And so the possibility of investing in the building to improve our storage options is attractive. The other thing that we need to park and potentially deal with this year, even if we decide to postpone a more significant investment, we probably have to have a discussion and a decision if, of our investment in that building period. It's, it's listed in a number of historical documents for the city. It's purpose originally is, is well documented as the power station for the electric rail system that came through here. So what the city wants to do to preserve it as a structure is also wrapped up in this conversation. And so at a minimum, I would say, you should ask us to bring it back for that conversation alone at some point later this year. But I certainly think we can, can figure things out if you want to postpone.
Okay, yeah, so, so no immediate downside if we say, hey, let's take that off the, the spending authorization for right now. We could revisit in a few months and, and see where we are.
Only the possibility that we'll have to sink some costs into it during the rainy season.
Okay. Councilmember Paulson, your thoughts on this issue?
Yeah, I mean, I, I had the exact same questions you did. And, and the only thing is maybe a little more quantitative. So if, if the, let's go to the worst case, so the roof fails, things have to be moved out, storage, storage has to be paid for. About how much are we talking in the worst case scenario there?
That I don't know, I haven't researched that.
We'd have to really study what in there could survive for a while outside versus what absolutely has to be.
I mean, I, I, I think the, the question is good. And I also, Councilmember Andre, I appreciate the prioritization, I'm in agreement. I, I do feel like in your second category, like, you know, public safety and then, you know, things that have a return. There's the inverse, like what's a negative return? And I look around the county and I see so much, you know, you know, of our assets, you know, looking at, at the TAM Union School District, looking at this very hall we're sitting in, going into disrepair. And, you know, short of further information, I tend to believe that, you know, you, you announce a prevention is a pound of cure in maintenance and logistics. So, so I'm a little inclined, more inclined to go with this, but also if there are a way to save money. But then it's not going to be any cheaper next year. As a matter of fact, with inflation, it'll probably be more next, next year. So I, I think we're punting to something that we may need more money in the future. So, so that being said, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, bring it back with more analysis. But I think we have so many items, you know, at four percent of the budget or two percent of the budget. I'm, you know, I'm not sure I want to, you know, to, to put it off completely. So those are my thoughts.
And I, I kind of feel the same way. I feel like inevitably we have to spend this money, we have to fix this. Whether we do it now or later, we're going to have to pay for it. I don't think there's anything we're not doing because of this. So I'm not sure the benefit of putting it over till later. But I, if you feel strongly about it, I would be happy to agree to come back to it in three months and have a more thorough conversation if you'd like.
I think that's fair. I mean, I, I think, you know, it's, what we're talking about here is putting fifty thousand dollars into understanding what the total cost might be. But, you know, as, as, but the total cost could be very large. And we have other, you know, a very long list of unfunded projects. And so I was just weighing in terms of some of the things can actually benefit, you know, have, actually have, you know, public health and safety type of ramifications and other things are, like the storage is, you know, yes, it's a historic building and, you know, do we need to spend money to maintain it? Yes, but the use of it is really for objects, not really for people. So that was kind of where I was coming from. But yes, I'm fine, I'm fine leaving it in and then maybe just, you know, once we have more information, we can make a decision.
All right, so, so if it's okay with staff, why don't we leave it in there? Okay, and maybe just have, bring it on the agenda one more time for us to discuss in a little more detail of, of what exactly we're doing, why we're doing it, what the total cost will be. Because we do have a lot on the agenda and this, maybe this is a half an hour conversation that we're not prepared to have tonight.
I could offer an alternative?
Sure.
Perhaps a way that Mr. Skinner and I can approach this particular study is to ask the consultant to run two scenarios. One is our concept of increasing its usage for storage. But secondly, what would the cost be to maintain the structure and improve its long, long-term life as it stands now? I mean, it's essentially a shell if we take you in there, it's, it's a big box, but it's a box that's deteriorating. We could also get a cost of what would it take to just ensure the building continues to stand in its current configuration?
Right, and if it's, if it's just for storage, I don't see why it has to be anything other than a shell, right?
Well, we were envisioning a mezzanine and increasing the volume of storage that could occur. So if you'd like, though, we could commission the study that way. So when we come have the conversation with you, you actually have some alternatives.
Why don't we do that? That's, that's a great idea. And then maybe we can have, you know, for this much money, you'll get this much storage, square foot of storage. For this much, you get a mezzanine, you have this much, and then we can make a decision.
And if you just want a shell, maybe there'll be a new use that someone thinks of later on.
Perfect. Okay, is that? Good, good. Okay, so within that, with that and those changes, can I get a motion for our capital improvements?
I'll, I'll move.
No, second.
Could we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes, so our capital improvement program has been approved with the changes that we've just discussed.
I did want to note, Mr. Mayor, I made one mistake as your parliamentarian. You, you opened the public hearing and I never nudged you to temporarily close it.
Temporarily, oh, temporarily closed.
Just a note for this next.
Perfect, okay, so it's temporarily closed right now while we move to item B on our fiscal capital improvements, which is the budget. So can we get a staff report for B, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I thought I would spare you after three meetings of hefty presentations from the city manager. I was just going to touch on the key points around the budget so that you can, and enter in your conversations about it. As we've spoken to in great detail, all economic indicators that affect the city suggest a significant softening of our revenues. Our revenues remain positive, our growth trend remains up, but that growth trend is flattening considerably. And all indications are that's going to continue for the next several years. So that puts us in a difficult situation because our costs are increasing and, and are increasing at a rate that's outpacing that growth. So that's not a situation we've been in for several years. We've been enjoying revenue equally or outpacing expenditures. Our expenditures are re-driven by a number of key costs. The one I've highlighted numerous times is a shift that CalPERS has done to deal with some shortcomings in its portfolio. That shift has ended up with a significant impact on all members of CalPERS. In the case of Larkspur, it's a significant six-figure impact over four hundred thousand dollars annually that we had not had in prior fiscal modeling. So we've had to build that in. Fortunately, as the council knows, we've been preparing for that possibility for a few years now. And so we have a portion of the reserves set aside to deal with this impact. So we have time to look at our overall operations and how we're going to adjust. We are also dealing with anticipated increases in our public safety costs due to new labor costs. We are dealing with health insurance premiums across not only our organization, but the JPAs that we belong to that are affecting us. We have contractual obligations to our employees in Larkspur that we're facing, so the payroll increases there. And then, as you know, in the marine climate, we participate in a number of joint powers organizations and joint power authorities in order to share the costs with all our, our neighbors. And sharing the costs helps us deliver high levels of services at an affordable cost. But just like all these things that I just described are hitting us, they're also hitting all those joint powers authorities. So the cost to be a member has been going up. And those are kind of the big five of increases that have been hitting us that we have built into our assumptions for this year. When we look at all our modeling and we anticipate that our revenues are going to fall short of our expend, projected expenditures. And that projected expenditure cost is because we are delivering the level of services and the mix of services and policy direction from the council that you've made. We describe the budget as being in a position of structural deficit, meaning that if we continue in our current state and we don't see an increase in revenues, then we're going to continue to operate at a deficit because the model that we're operating under is designed that way. So when we face a level of structural deficit, we first have to ask ourselves, can we handle the projected deficit? The deficit in this budget is one that is three, about three hundred fifty thousand, if I recall. We can handle that, we have plenty of reserves at the moment, but it's not a sustainable number. So what we have to do is, what I'm recommending is that we absorb that structural deficit in this current fiscal year. And we make a commitment to look at our operations, the structure on which we deliver our services to the community. We revisit what we're mandated to do, we revisit what we've decided to do because it's what we want to deliver to the community. And we see if we can affect our operations in a way to correct or cure that deficit. So that's going to be the commitment from staff. And I know the commitment from the council to the community this year is to have that robust conversation. And I feel very fortunate that we've been very prudent over the last several years to be in a position where we don't have to panic and make cuts immediately to deal with the situation. We have the ability to work through it over the coming months and, and through the fiscal year. Because our ultimate goal is to minimize this situation and reach a point where we're still delivering all of the services that our community expects and is entitled to receive. There, at the last meeting, we identified for you a number of special funds, what we call special revenue funds, that are essentially parts of the general fund that you've parked in a special designation so that it's clear to the public what revenues are in there and what your intention is for the use of those revenues. Those sometimes are the most robust part of your decision-making as you go through the budget. Because there's, you've parked them there so that you can put them to use for very particular purposes. And within those purposes, you have decisions you can make. So some of your discussions this evening, you've already had at least one entity indicate they'd like to continue a discussion with you about the use of the transient occupancy tax fund, which is a fund that you set aside one-tenth of your TOT or hotel tax for the purpose of investing in activities that will promote commerce in the business community. And so that's one area you may find yourself engaged in through this public hearing. Another key set of special funds that we discussed at length in the last couple of meetings, and you'll need to resolve this evening, are, and essentially by approving the capital improvement program, you've already kind of blessed them, but we need to highlight them, are your special sales tax funds, which are actually transaction and use funds. These funds are the ones that the voters have entrusted to you and to use on behalf of the city to invest in essential services. Our Measure B fund is the one we've invested heavily in the roads. Now that we've had the success of having finished our program with the exception of a few pieces here and there, we've transitioned to maintenance in that program and it's time to be thinking about other uses. We also have a second sales tax fund, Measure G, that is our new fund with a little more emphasis on our storm drains and on dealing with infrastructure that's affected by climate change and then also with disaster preparedness and resiliency. And so there's been proposals that were in the capital improvement program, they're programmed into the budget to deal with those issues. Generally, I think that this budget reflects a very concerted effort by all the department heads on the team to try to hold costs down. concerted effort by all the department heads on the team to try to hold costs down, recognizing the challenge that we were facing. And so we've tried as much as possible to keep the city's operations flat. And the increases within the departments limited to payroll increases that were committed to previously. Um, in addition, I um, need to acknowledge Amelia Gabrielle. She should come up here. Come on up. Uh, our administrative services director. And uh, as I've noted before, I get way too much credit for this budget. Amelia does all the hard work and then I stand up and try my best to uh, explain it to everybody. So um, if you ask a really difficult question, I'll probably turn right to Amelia and ask her to answer it for you. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna turn back to you and then this is a public hearings. We should open it up again to the public at some point.
I shall. Before I open it up to the public, though, I will, I turn to my council members. Any questions for staff before we open it to the public based on that presentation?
Not for me.
Okay. Let's uh, open up the public hearing again. So now we are uh, on the budget. Anyone who has any comments, questions for staff? Um, things you'd like to discuss. Now would be your time. Come on up. Yep, come on up.
Hey guys, we're back again. Yeah. So uh, on behalf of, of the Larkspur Chamber of Commerce, we're just making another concerted effort to try and get more of the TOT funding for our annual operating expenses and, and events that we're trying to put on. We believe that without a lift of what's already been granted to us or agreed upon, it's gonna make it very difficult for us to be viable.
Um, I think we are all based with the inflationary and the cost of doing these things. But I think to um, Councilperson Andre's point is like, we're really doing a lot more than we ever had in the past and really promoting those things for people of the community, the business community and the community itself. Mayor uh, Candell, uh, you had a great time at Holiday.
It was fantastic.
Yeah. And we want to be able to keep doing those things because I think it really promotes Larkspur. And people feel a sense of community when they get to attend those events. You know, we're kind of, I think we just want to have a little more surety that will be, the funding will be there because I appreciate like what you said before about kind of the way can we see, can we have more of the money? Unfortunately, we need to start planning these things significantly far in advance. So I think we're just looking for a greater sense of security that some of that miscellaneous money could be moved. We're not asking um, to increase the overall budget, but just reallocated a little bit more. So we have some more surety that we can continue to do all the things that we're growing and doing.
All right. So, so let me start with asking uh, staff. I believe right now a projection is about 94,000 for the TOT. Out of that 94,000, uh, I think the things that that's going to is the Fourth of July parade. There was another event and the remainder was going to the chamber. Was that accurate?
Uh, it's the Fourth of July parade. Uh, 50,000 for the chamber and then 29,000, I believe for staff activities. Uh, we do a lot of things like printing banners and mailers and things like that.
Okay.
Be happy to do that.
So, so uh, let me start out by saying, I think the chamber is doing a fantastic job. There, there's been a, a marked switch. You know, uh, in the I, I don't want to put down the, the, the past group. I just want to say you're, you're, you're doing great.
We're moving forward.
You're, 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 you're doing great. Having said that, we have a budget, right? And a lot of times the chamber uh, is able to raise money through its members uh, or through other fundraising events, you know, and can be partially self-sustaining in the sense that I am hopeful that a hundred percent of the chamber's budget doesn't come from city council. That there's.
So we had, eh, eh, as we had come up here and said, you know, when we had our transitions and we said Larkspur Chamber 2.0, 3.0, we're gonna get there and we have gotten there. But we're in this transition period from a funding perspective that we are not self-sustainable at the moment. And it's teetering on the point where we've put all this effort into building us back up, but we're not going to be viable. If we, eh, without.
Kind of like, I would liken it to more like a startup again.
Yeah.
You know, we want to do these things, but we need some help from the city to kind of get us over.
We're hoping next year that we don't have to come back and, and.
Ask.
And pit.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, and, and so with the additional funds, um, is the idea to spend it on events? Uh, community promotional type of activities, pro- you know, promoting businesses and economic activity?
And so things like where we had, uh, we're gonna have an election year. We had the things for meet the candidates. Those things cost money.
Mm-hmm.
But we're not charging the city for those kinds of events, yet they still cost us money. So um, there's all these things. We're doing the ribbon cuttings now we haven't done before, and we are doing more to promote those things. Those things may have to get scaled back or, you know, we're not going to be able to do because we just won't have the resources.
Wine stroll.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that. I mean, I do feel that the chamber has really, uh, in the past year has really stepped up. Um, a lot of their events and um, the wine stroll and the holiday on, at Magnolia. And then also they did host two um, candidate forums. Um, for, and I, I know their elections, a big election is coming up in November. Um, I, I do, I do feel that um, what the chamber is doing is trying to enhance not just the community aspect of our, you know, of our city, but also um, help to generate um, additional business activity and economic activity, which ultimately will increase, you know, sales tax revenue and so forth. So in my mind, this is a a, a potential positive return type of expenditure or investment. And so um, I, I would be, I would be in favor of um, granting them their, their request. Is it, is it for the 94,000 or?
Uh, just um, we want to support the uh, July Fourth parade of that 29,000. That's kind of a miscellaneous bucket or like um, other things um, that we could have that money.
So, or at least. So they ask us for the 29,000s or the asks for, or the, or the 94?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Of the, of the extra that we're asking for part of the, yeah, the 29 or
Okay.
Get, getting us ha- uh, somewhere between the 50 and the 94.
Okay.
We need, we need a little bit more to make this happen.
Okay.
Let, let me, let me ask staff, uh, in the past. I- is there ever kind of the relationship with the chamber where they may come to us with proposed events and budgets and we can fund them on a, you know, uh, à la carte type situation? Uh, or is it really just at the beginning of the year, here's your budget and see you next year?
It's been a mix at different times. It's been a base amount and then what you're describing is an à la carte arrangement. Or last year it was entirely an à la carte. For, you know, make a proposal for an event. When it's, that's either of those two options, it's really me seeing if I can find some money to do that. I think if Vice Mayor Way were here as the liaison of the chamber, she had stated to me that it was her preference to come up with a fixed amount and, and say, this is the fixed amount for the chamber for the year. So that that way they can do their planning and we don't have to be in that situation where we're trying to scramble to find dollars first.
Right. So, so let me ask the follow-up question, which is the $29,000 in the miscellaneous fund. Could you kind of explain a little bit more what that money is used for? It's, it sounds like the chamber is suggesting they take over those responsibilities. And the question is, what are those responsibilities? So?
Yes. They can't take over a lot of what we do with that fund because we can't outsource that work because we have to go through the protocols as a government for certain purchases for services and goods. So what would happen if we didn't have that 29,000 available is we'd have to prioritize our suite of activities that we do. So we might decide that, for example, I keep pointing to the banners, but that's one we spent a lot of money on. Uh, maybe the banners we just put up are gonna be up all year because we don't have um, any money to do that for this year. Um, we just signed a professional photographer to improve our uh, suite of photos that we own and that we can make use of for both social media and promotion of the city and promotion of business in the city. We've never done that before. We were gonna pay for that out of that account. If you take this money and give it to the chamber, I will honor the contract that we signed, which is a time of material contract and I'll have to find those dollars from somewhere else in the budget. Um, we do a, a number of uh, charges to that account where we pooled money that we have from other sources to do uh, outreach, education and, and publications that are intended to promote a combination of activities. So for example, sometimes that money may fund a page or two in the rec guide where we've done promotions for the chamber, promotions for events that are intended to, to involve the community for the business community's benefit, that sort of thing. Some of that I could find money for, some I can't.
Right. All right. So I am convinced I don't want to take that 29 from you. Okay. So the, the question then is maybe we put off the Wayfair signs for a year. I mean, it sounds like what you're saying is you're putting yourself in a startup situation. You know, saying that if we can just get running, we're not gonna have to come to you next year with the same request. I mean, uh, maybe that's where we get the money from or, you know, I, what's.
I just had a couple of questions.
What do you think?
May I comment on the mayor's console? That's clear. Um, so the Wayfair, the wayfinding project is from existing fund balance in the TOT fund and not from up the annual revenue. So that discussion I had at the beginning about thinking about operations and structural deficits. So this fund 94 is coming in, 94 is gonna go out. There's a fund balance of, you know, how much in the TOT?
Okay. As of June 30th, 2023, the fund balance was $569,000. So this is from the audit. Uh, we're projecting to have a fund balance of $596,000 as of June 30th, 2024.
So these are essentially when it's in the fund balance, it's a reserve. It's one-time money. So I just wanted context for the mayor's comments that you can always allocate one-time money, but you have to recognize that when you've done that, you may not be able to honor that within the context of the structure of the budget in a subsequent year.
Right. And, and that's what I'm saying. If we're looking at this as a startup one-time thing, I would probably be more comfortable instead of taking your, your, the 29 from, from the city, saying we're gonna take 25,000 from reserves as a one-time kind of startup expense to uh, allow you to do what you need to do. Uh, with the understanding that we can't do that every year, that this is, this is kind of a one-time thing. But uh, Councilmember Paulson, you were going to.
Sure. Yeah. No, no, this, these are all great questions and I um, also want to echo the appreciation. I mean, I think there has been, I was very active with the chamber during COVID and I kind of wish Councilmember Way were here. So she has a little more information. Um, just, you know, as, as a, you know, startup question, how many um, members do you have? You know, uh, how many due paying members do you have in the chamber now?
It runs from anywhere from 70 to 100.
Okay. And I, and, and what, what was it last year? I mean, is it trending up or what's the, what's the general?
It's about the same. It's about static. Uh, you know, there's some a little bit. We gain some, we lose a couple. But again, I think we'll see some growth over the coming year because the board members, we have, again, we're kind of a startup again. There's a whole new board practically and people are, the people on the board are much more engaged about getting new members.
Okay. Cause I'm, I'm inclined to agree with, with my, my colleagues. I mean, I, I, I want to support what you're doing. Um, what I'm, you know, really paying attention to is, you know, the steps you're taking towards self, self-sustaining, you know, autonomy. And then the other is, is the events. So for example, we were discussing the 29, you know, the city is doing some of the same things you are. And, and you know, part of it is, is where is the greatest return on investment? So for me, an activity like the wine stroll was wonderful. And I'm, you know, on that note, curious, do you have more planned for the year or how's that gonna? You know, what type of events, you know, might this extra money be supporting?
So we had a grand plan that we pitched earlier before that we'd have more events. Um, holiday magic is, is one that we want to turn into. You know, we, you have a first annual that's gonna break even or lose money, right? But the longer we have that, the, as the years grow, that will become a bigger event similar to wine stroll in, in our mind. Wine stroll, um, we doubled our revenue last year. I'm hoping to, to at least increase it by 50% this year. Uh, adding more wineries. Sorry, I'm, I'm bullish. I did it last year.
That's why he's the president and I'm the treasurer.
So between wine stroll, between holiday magic and eventually adding a third and then building up uh, what we would like to have a, a reserve. That's kind of set aside, just like you. We also have just real quick, other sources of revenue that we're trying to build. And one of those uh, is having our own logo and trying to sell merchandise that could help us be self-sustaining. That cost was a sunk cost for first year that we had to put into new CRM, new website. All these things are gonna go to having more membership, having more awareness, bringing more people to Larkspur and having more revenue. That takes time. That's your startup mode. That's our, our hockey stick, right? So we're kind of coming out of that, that bottom of the hockey stick is starting to become more uh, self-sustaining. But we're in that middle zone where we need a little bit more funding and we're asking for your help to do it. And I don't think it's, we're not asking for hundreds of thousands. We're asking for, you know, 25 or 50.
I, 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 I think that's reasonable. And I think a- as you are more successful, uh, your members will see the value of being a member and they'll be willing to pay higher dues and they'll want to advertise and things like that. So uh, I would be comfortable uh, taking a one-time $25,000 out of the reserve. Uh, if my fellow council members would be on the same page.
I, I would agree. I would support that.
Yeah, same here.
Okay. Let's uh, uh, any comments or reasons we shouldn't do that, that you want to uh, speak on?
No. And what we'll do, Mr. Mayor, is we'll bring that as an item at the next agenda to that you authorized the release from the fund balance for that purpose. That doesn't require you to change the budget this evening.
Perfect. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Okay. So we are now still on public hearing regarding the budget. Uh, anyone else uh, want to come up for a, a public uh, comment on the budget? Seeing none. I will close public hearing on the budget. Bring it back to staff. And I know we have talked about this for, for meetings now and I'm pretty comfortable with it. But I will uh, open up if staff has any comments or other changes that they would like to uh, make or comment on.
Where's staff?
Uh, sorry. Council.
I, I, I'm happy playing that role. But no, I, 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 I agree. I think we've talked it through. I, I don't have anything specific at the moment.
I just have one question. I just have one question on the investments. At some point, will we be having a meeting discussing that? Cause I know it's the, the resolution says that we're delegating to um, the administrative services director. But at some point, does she come back and propose like, or allow us to take a look at what sort of investments we're investing in?
We'd be, so historically, council members who've been interested in our investment portfolio have just scheduled a meeting
Okay.
with Ms. Gabrielle to look at uh, the suite. As just for the benefit of the public and you, you know, for years with interest rates low, with our need for liquidity, we went through a long period where we were using just a handful of vehicles to house our money. We've only just, I think the last few years really started to branch out, which it's been timely because interest rates have gone up. But we'd be happy to brief you. We'd be happy to brief the whole council if you want a meeting. It's just sometimes it doesn't work well to have a public debate about how the city should, whether they should be buying this investment vehicle or that because there's so many restrictions on us on how we can invest our money.
Okay. Well, I would just like to review, I mean, I know we get the report every quarter or monthly um, in terms of what um, what the investments are, but uh, but also I'd like to just have the opportunity to maybe see where we might be able to increase some of the returns. I, I know we are in very conservative um, investment vehicles for a reason. Um, but I, I, to the extent possible, where, while interest rates are still high, I think that we should try and maximize our returns if possible.
Okay. Uh, with that, uh, I will ask for a motion, uh, passing the uh, adopting the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget, uh, and all of the uh, subcategories listed under that section.
Um, I will make that motion.
Second.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Mr. Mayor.
Whoa, hang on. I did something wrong.
Got the public.
Oh, close public hearing.
Yeah. You, you, did you invite everybody up?
Swear to you. Yep. Yep. So closed public hearing. All right. All right, now, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Cando?
Yes.
Okay. Now, moving on to seven point two. Introduction and first reading of Ordinance ten seventy-six, up amending Title eighteen. Zoning of the Larksboro municipal code to allow fence height exceptions to be approved by the zoning administrator without public hearing when no protests are received. Can we get a staff report?
I think Mr. Neal from the Community Development Department is here this evening.
Hello, good evening, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. I have a brief presentation for you this evening. So this evening, we are requesting that you hold the public hearing and consider proposed amendments to the city zoning codes as they relate to fence height and regulations and exception permits. Thank you, forgive me. So in nineteen sixty-eight, the comprehensive zoning code was adopted, which introduced the fence height regulations as they exist today, which require fences may not exceed six height, six feet in height when located in a side or rear yard, and three and a half feet in height when located in the front yard. In nineteen seventy-eight, a fence height exception permit process was adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council via ordinance five ninety-eight, and this established a deposit-based fees to cover staff times and staff time and materials for public hearings before the Planning Commission for fence height exception permits. In nineteen ninety-three, the Office of the Zoning Administrator was established. The zoning administrator function is fulfilled either by the planning director or an appointee of the planning director. And in nineteen ninety-three, the planning, the zoning administrator became the deciding body for the fence height exception permits at public hearings. At that time, fees were deposit-based to cover staff time and materials. In two thousand and three, the city adopted a new flat fee schedule for most planning permits. At that time, the fence height exception permit flat fee became four thousand and nine dollars. That flat fee schedule also established a penalty that was is is twice the application fee. So if there is a fence height exception that's coming in after the fact or is related to code enforcement, the fee for that today is eight thousand and eighteen dollars. Currently, staff has approximately twenty-two pending code enforcement cases related to fence height exceptions. A majority of these are in the Larkspur Marina. Many fences appear to have been built during COVID when things were shut down. People weren't necessarily getting permits, or often what happens with fences is people see a a neighbor built their fence this way, maybe didn't realize that that neighbor went through a fence height exception permit. And then they make an assumption that they too can build a fence and so on and so forth. And so then you have fences that get built, and we end up getting complaints about them, and that's how we end up with this lengthy code enforcement list. And most of these can be supported by staff. Most of these fence fences that exist today as code enforcement infractions, we can make the findings to approve them. However, we're hearing from the public that an eight thousand and eighteen dollar fee is just something that they can't they can't afford it. They can't wrap their heads around such a high fee for the something that we can support. And then we've got issues where people are cutting down fences just to bring them into compliance when they've already put the money and effort into building them, which is, as you can imagine, probably quite frustrating for people. So today, staff's recommending that we, in an in an effort to bring the cost down for these, that we eliminate the public hearing requirement before the zoning administrator. When staff can make findings to approve the fence height exception permit. The proposed process is something that's currently utilized for exception permits as they relate to making changes to non-conforming structures and also heritage tree removal permits. So this just briefly outlines the existing process. Typically, hopefully, when people want to build a fence, they come and talk with staff early and often, at which point we let the property owner know whether or not we think the findings can be made. That's typical for all of our applications. We like to make sure people are bringing things in that we can support. If a fence height exception is associated with a larger planning application that requires discretionary permits, it's automatically going to be included in in the hearing to the Planning Commission. Otherwise, we receive an application, we receive the flat fee, a hearing date is scheduled and duly noticed on and posted on site. The public hearing is held before the zoning administrator. Zoning administrator does not have regularly regularly scheduled meetings like the Planning Commission. So what happens with those is that we typically work with the property owner applicant to find a time that works for them. Often, they're held midday or late afternoon here in the council chambers. It is very rare that zoning administrator hearings are attended by anyone other than the zoning administrator and the applicant or property owner. And sometimes even then, they may not come if they've gotten word that it's intended to be approved. Like all of our decisions, this is open to an appeal period of ten days, after which the decision becomes effective. So for our proposed process would be very similar to this. We'd have a pre-application meeting. If we can determine that we can make the findings to support the application, we at that point, we would let the applicant know, yes, this seems like something we could support. We would encourage them to go ahead and file their application. Same thing, if this is part of a larger discretionary permit, it would automatically go to the Planning Commission like it does now. The flat fee would be six hundred and thirty-three dollars. That is the fee that is established for exception permits. The penalty would remain. It would be doubled if it was a code enforcement infraction. And if staff can make the findings to approve, a mail notice indicating intent to approve would be sent to all property owners within three hundred feet radius of the site and posted in a visible location at the site as well as in our three public noticing boards. This would be open to a fifteen-day objection period. I do want to clarify that the ordinance, as it's written today, does say ten-day objection period. Exception permits have a ten-day objection period. Heritage tree removal permits have a fifteen-day objection permit. We have heard from the public that a fifteen-day period would be a preferred amount of time. We have no objection to that and can discuss amending some some language in the Exhibit A. If an objection is filed within that fifteen-day period, then the Planning Commission must hear that fence height exception permit, and it would go to them to make the final decision. And if the application is not protested, it would be considered approved on the effective date, with any member able to appeal that decision within ten days of the decision being made. This is just showing a few of the fences in question at this time. These are all fences that full properties that have received a code enforcement notification. These are all fences that the city can support. Several of these are located in the Larkspur Marina HOA. As you can see, the ones that the staff can su- support, the reason they largely can be is because they're not, well, one, most importantly, not creating any safety hazards. They're not closing off the street scene. We're not getting these big tall fences right at the property line. They're maintaining a vegetative buffer. They're using some kind of, as you can see in the upper right, like semi-transparent where you can still see through it. It's maintaining their privacy for their children or their animals or whatever their reason is for it without making a fortress. That's really what we want to avoid with having too many tall fences within our front yard setbacks. On April twenty-third and May fourteenth, we brought this matter to the Planning Commission. They considered the draft ordinance at public hearings, at which time one resident opposed the ordinance and recommended that maintaining a public hearing process would discourage tall fences. And the Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt the ordinance as it's written today. So with that being said, I would like to discuss the two amendments to the language that we would like to introduce. So this is in Exhibit A, Attachment One. So D two, public notice in action on the fourth line. This reads posted on the subject. There's a typo here, so we would like to add the word property on three city bulletin boards pursuant to Muni Code Section one zero eight zero two zero, and then carry on with the rest of the language. And then the last line of this section under number two, line ten, will say unless a written protest is received by the zoning administrator within fifteen days of the notice. So here, we're just going to clarify that that's a fifteen-day protest period, and then also just bring the language in to clarify that our public noticing does include the bulletin boards as well as posting on the site in a visible area. It's it's standard for all of our public notices, but we do want to make it clear in this language here as well. That concludes my report, and I am available for any questions.
So, Neil, thank you for that report. And let me say, I think this is a fantastic idea. You know, if we can lower fees and lower kind of bureaucracy, but you know, the process, streamline things. I think it's great. Having said that, not hiding my cards, I'll bring it to council. Questions for staff?
Yeah, I I'm just curious a little bit how this evolved. Were there a lot of members of the community who brought complaints, specifically the ones you said in the Marina District? Because I I really didn't see this one coming. It makes sense, though, yeah.
Yeah, so I I inherited the fence height code enforcement cases sometime in the last year. Because a- a- as a matter of code enforcement, they are really so tied to the planning side of things that it really, we just were like, let's get a planner. I was looking at these to work with these and Larkspur Marina, I think, is this is its own unique case, because they really do, when you look at the history of what's happened there, they really do have a lot of fences that went up between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two, and a lot of them do follow. You see, okay, there's this property got a fence height exception permit, and then the one next door to it put up a fence that matches it, and the one next door to that put up a fence that matches it. And part of that is also because the HOA's bylaws were not congruent with the zoning code. So the HOA was approving fences that weren't meeting the zoning code. That is something that the HOA is amending their bylaws so that it will match our zoning code. And then the second part of the issue is when we went to flat fees from deposit-based. So prior to our flat fees, the deposit for a fence height exception permit was just over a thousand dollars, and it was deposit-based. Since the zoning administrator hearing, it does require still the public noticing. It does require the time. The staff report's not as lengthy as other projects. The time being that many, many times, not very many people were showing up to these. The meetings were quite short, so that deposit was oftentimes enough to cover all of the staff time and materials. It would be very rare that we would charge additional on top, and sometimes even be able to refund the applicant. So it was a twofold issue of trying to work through this backlog of code enforcement cases, and then also having the fee go from deposit to flat fee. Did create quite a change. So that's where, that's where.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate the background. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, let me just chime in real quick that the vice mayor and I were interviewing the commissioners whose terms were up. And this was one of the comments that many of them made is, you know, please streamline things. We don't need to have hearings for fence heights. You know, if there's things that, you know, staff can do, we don't need to deal with it. So I think it's 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 a fantastic thing. Like I said. I'm sorry, Councilmember Andre?
I agree. I think that if we can streamline things, that would be great. And if nobody objects, I guess my question would be, have you found any instances where the exception is where the fence is just too tall and you've you've asked people to cut down or or reduce the 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 height of the fence?
Yeah, so in this in this process, knowing that we've been working to bring this to the council, I have been working with the fence, the property owners that have fences that we could support, saying, hi, you know, let's just put a pin in this and see what happens. But for people who have fences that we know we cannot make the findings, there's no way we make the findings. We tell them that. We're not going to be able to make the findings. Your choices are to either take this to the Planning Commission and see if they disagree with staff. And if they can make the findings to approve it, then they will. Or you can bring your fence into compliance.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. I will now open this up to the public. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this? Yes, come on up.
James Holmes, Larkspur. I think there is a greater interest, public interest and concern with front yard, street-side fences than with side yard and rear fences, because the street-side fences could wall off the neighborhood in a way that affects all passersby. This concern with the streetscape is expressly acknowledged in the ordinance itself, which requires that a fence height exception, quote, not significantly visually obstruct the openness of the street scene, unquote. I think that the proposed streamlined procedure is fine for side and yard, side yard fences and rear fences, which mostly affect the adjoining landowners. But I think that for street-side front fences, you should keep the existing procedure for those fences because of the greater public impact and interest. I do think the fee is way too high. I mean, jumping from circa one thousand to four thousand. That that indicates there's a real, real need to reconsider that and go back to the prior procedure. But in terms of making a distinction between fences that are affected with the public interest and fences that are not, I think that it's reasonable to keep a procedure that reflects that distinction. I had a couple of other concerns. If you did want to keep the streamlined procedure for all for for both front and and side back fences, I wanted to make sure that the notice process included the bulletin boards and the other broader notice, which would have been followed under the existing process and to keep the fif- or the fifteen-day protest period. I understand now that the staff concurs that the protest period and the scope of notice should be retained as as was described. But I do think it's worth distinguishing between front yard fences and 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 side and backyard fences. So in a streamlined process, I I don't know how many of the 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 backlogs related to front versus side and back, but I do think there's a big distinction between them, and it's worth having that distinction reflected in the procedures. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me follow up with Ms. O'Neal on that. My understanding, my memory from what you said, is that anyone from the public can appeal. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I guess the question following up with with Mr. Holmes, the people within a certain radius get some type of notice. How does the rest of the public get notified that this is happening?
Well, it would be posted on site. So if someone's passing by, they might see the notice, and then as well as in the bulletin boards. So people who are checking those regularly, we have one here at City Hall, one at Bonner Shopping Center, and one at Marin Mart in Larkspur Landing.
Okay, and i- is there some online place that it can be posted? I mean, I, let let me ask Mr. Holmes. It it's publicly posted on these bulletin boards. Does that meet your concern, or how would you?
Yes, it 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 does, and I actually think under the current process, even if it's not in the ordinance, I think under the current process, there's on the website, believe it or not, I I read that website. I don't very well, but there's a on the website, there's something that says council notices and planning commission notices. And I do think that though this kind of thing is often put on the on the there, so I think.
Well, but I don't know if it will be anymore, because it sounds like it's not going to be going to Planning Commission unless there's an appeal. Is that right?
But I I I do think that it would be worthwhile to have them posted somewhere on the website.
Okay, and that's, I I I don't disagree with that in the sense, again, I don't know logistically if that's possible, how long it would take to modify the website. But if there is some way to post on the website, so somebody who's not a neighbor has notice, I think that would resolve. I think that would resolve all these problems.
Absolutely. That's something we can do. My question for you would be, do you want to codify that, or would you like that to be a best practice?
I think it's a best practice would be fine.
Yeah, and that's something that we can do very easily.
Okay, and let me, first of all, it's still public, open to the public, so any other public comments on this item? Seeing none, I will close public comment, and then I'll bring it back to council. Any thoughts or things you'd like to discuss?
No further concerns.
Okay, can I get a motion on this then?
I'll make a motion.
No, second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes. Okay, so 7.2 passes.
Just want to clarify that since Ms. O'Neal noted there were a few typos in the ordinance, that your motion includes authority to clean those up as not to adopt the ordinance exactly as introduced.
Right, thank you for that clarification. Okay, moving on to 7.3. This is our last public hearing, and then we'll get to the business items. 7.3, introduction and first reading of ordinance 1077, "Amending the Larkspur Municipal Code to Make It Consistent With State Housing Law and to Address Potential Environmental Impacts for Nondiscretionary Projects." Can we get a staff report, please?
Good evening. Staff is recommending the city council introduce an ordinance that will address the number of state housing laws and comments received by the State Department of Housing and Community Development on the draft housing element and the city accessory dwelling unit regulations. Staff's been working on ordinances to address the state housing requirements and to address the state's preliminary comments on the draft housing element while we've been waiting the comments on the latest draft of the housing element that they're reviewing. And this ordinance will reduce the number of programs the city will need to address after adoption of the housing element. Staff's also recommending the addition of a few performance standards to protect structures, residents, and archaeological resources from nondiscretionary projects. And these performance standards will also reduce the number of mitigation measures the city will need to include in the environmental impact report for the draft general plan and the housing element. We provided a summary of the changes in the staff report, and I'm happy to go over them if you want me to. But we're recommending, moving forward with the ordinance text as proposed, and recommend that the city council hold a public hearing, consider the proposed amendments to the municipal code, and introduce by title only the proposed ordinance and waive further reading. And that concludes my staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions or go over any of the items for you.
Okay, well, let me turn to my fellow council members. Any questions for staff?
No, not at this moment.
I have to say that reading through all of this was a bit overwhelming because I'm not familiar with all the codes that were referenced. I guess my question is, because I attended some of the planning commission meetings where this was discussed at planning, and it seemed to me that there were some issues with the wording around the ADUs and some of the square footage.
Right.
So is that, is that going to get corrected? I mean, if we pass this, I'm fine passing it as it is, but it sounds like planning may want to come back with, or revise the wording on some of this.
The planning commission did want to revise the wording on, there's some revisions to sections, the text is under sections 15 and 16 of the ordinance, and the state had misunderstood the city's floor area ratio bonus that we grant so that property owners can expand their primary residence if they give up floor area to create a second unit. The state was looking at that as a limitation on the size of ADUs. So we had the city attorney assist us in rewording our provision and make it clear to the state, and the planning commission wasn't thrilled about the, and didn't think it was that clear. And I think it could be improved, but it'll take additional time, and we're anxious to get our ordinance adopted so that the city's in compliance with state housing regulations. And it also looks like we're making good effort to comply with state housing element laws as the state is reviewing our housing element. The state seems like continually changing the ADU regulations, so I'm sure there'll be another opportunity for the ADU regulations to come back before the planning commission, or we could bring them back after the housing element's adopted, when they have more time to consider it. Because, and then a lot of the issues they had concerns with were just state laws that we can't change. So I think that was one of the concerns, was some of the laws that have been passed, they just don't agree with.
Okay, with that, I will open up public hearing. So anyone in the public that has a comment on this item would like to have a question for staff, comments for the council. Now would be your chance. Come on up.
James Holmes, I guess it's an old saying that the sailwind that blows nobody any good. And as bad as these state laws are, if I correctly understood the staff report, one change that is having to be made is that ADUs cannot have a connecting door. And I see that the pine director is nodding her head. Am I correct on that?
A late change that we recommended the planning commission at the last, prior to the last hearing because the units are required to meet fire separation requirements, and allowing a door between the units doesn't meet a fire separation requirement. So in addition, we're also seeing some very creative second-story ADU additions that are only accessible from the main residence. So it kind of helps to ensure that the units will be rental units and also that they're safe, there's safety between the two units for fire.
That's what I, the planning commission on various occasions has discussed this issue of whether or not there can be a communicating door. And sometimes there was a sense of frustration that having a communicating door simply meant that it was not going to be a real ADU, it was simply going to be additional floor space for the owners. But at least in this case, it looks like the state has indeed closed the door on that particular loophole.
Okay, thank you. Other public comments or questions? Seeing none, I will close public comment on this, bring it back to council. Any final thoughts or discussion? Nope, seeing none. Can I ask someone to make a motion?
I'll move to pass 1077.
I'll second.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes. So item 7.3 passes. Moving on to, and that ends our public hearings. Now moving to business items. Business item 8.1, "Accepting a Certificate of Sufficiency of a Petition Entitled 'Limit Rent Increases and for an Evictions of Tenants of Some Rental Units and Consideration of Additional Council Actions Related to This Initiative." Can I get a staff report for that, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be delivering the staff report this evening. So back in December of last year, the city received, was referred to as a notice of intent to circulate an initiative petition, which started this process. My office then prepared a title and some, what's called a title and summary in the elections code, which basically assigned the initiative a title and provided the public with a summary that would have to be circulated with the initiative petition so that they'd have an independent, short summary of the main purposes of the proposed ordinance. Once the proponents had received that, they were required to publish notice and provide proof of publication to the city clerk. And once they had done that, they began circulating the petitions. In, on May 6th, the proponents of the initiative submitted the initiative petition to the city clerk. The city clerk's office did what's referred to as a prima facie review, where they reviewed the signatures just to determine initially whether or not it appeared there were enough signatures on the petition to move it forward. It did appear that there were enough signatures, and so the petition was submitted to the county registrar of voters, who is actually the body that is able to verify that the signatures are from registered voters of the city of Larkspur. On May 14th, the registrar reported to the city clerk that the petition contained 1,014 valid signatures, which is more than the number required to qualify an initiative petition for submission to the voters. So the next step in that process is the one that we are here for tonight, which is the presentation to the city council of a certificate of sufficiency. And there's one resolution before you tonight that just accepts that certificate. It's a ministerial action by the city council to accept that. All you're doing by adopting that resolution is verifying that the city clerk has received from the registrar of voters a report that validates that there are enough signatures from registered city voters to qualify the petition for the ballot. But before you tonight, you have three options. One is to adopt the ordinance as presented. You do not have to actually adopt it tonight. You are, if you choose to move forward with adopting it, you may do so within 10 days of tonight's meeting. The second option is to submit the ordinance to the voters for consideration at the November ballot. You also do not have to take that action tonight, but the resolution is in front of you if you wanted to do that. You have until August 9th to take that action. That would be August 9th being the last day under state law that the city council can act to call an election on a ballot measure, including an initiative such as this one. The final option before the council is to order a report regarding the potential impacts of the proposed ordinance on the city. The option to do that is provided to the city council under elections code section 9212. So the report is often referred to as a 9212 report. If the council wants that report prepared, staff must come back to you within 30 calendar days of tonight's meeting to present the outcome of that report. Because of the cancellation of the June 19th meeting and the July 3rd meeting, we'd have to find a time for a special meeting to provide you with that report. Once you have received that report, and I am just pulling up my notes to make sure that I get this exactly correct. Okay, so once you receive the report, you must either adopt the ordinance within 10 days or call an election on the initiative. So if you, so from, if you choose to order the report, we'll schedule a special meeting within the next 30 days to present that to you. At that meeting, you must either call the election, or if you say that you want to adopt the ordinance, then you have an additional 10 days. So I'm just sort of trying to lay out the calendar for you. So those are the options in front of you tonight. We are happy to answer any questions that you have, both about the substance of the ordinance and the procedural pathways. The one action that you must take tonight is to adopt the ordinance, accepting the certificate of sufficiency. But the other options, you can either take tonight, such as ordering the report, or if you wanted to call the election, simply call the election without the report, then you have until August 9th to do so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I'm sure that you may probably have a lot of questions for the city manager as well.
Okay, let me ask my fellow council members questions that you may have.
Yeah, I think just for the benefit of the public, if you can outline the main, you know, points of the ordinance, proposed ordinance, and you know, as it differs from, you know, existing law.
The initiative that's before you differs significantly from the city's ordinance in the following ways. The rent cap, the number at which you have to apply to the city to exceed if you're a landlord, under the city's ordinance, it's 5% plus CPI, the lesser of, sorry, yeah, the lesser of 5%. Or CPI comes out to 7% generally.
I believe the lesser of 5% plus CPI or 7%.
Thank you. And versus this ordinance is 2/3 of CPI. So that's a substantial difference. Other significant differences in this ordinance, there's quite a bit in the eviction protection components of this ordinance that provide different types of rights of return provisions that are not present in Larkspur's ordinance. There's also a number of pieces of Larkspur ordinance that are silenced and draw from state law, particularly with respect to some of the contractual arrangements in a lease itself that are present in this ordinance. For example, this ordinance actually provides provisions around subletting that our ordinance is silent about. So, and if you ask for a 9212 report, this would be part of what we would provide in that report.
So that brings me to a question, which is, I'm inclined to ask for a 9212 report. My question is, do we have to give you direction tonight of what we want in that 9212 report? Or is that just kind of standard? We just say, we'd like the 9212 report, and then you know, you know exactly what you, what we're looking for?
So the code section provides, a primary purpose of the report is to identify the costs that the city and therefore the taxpayer would incur as a result of the potential passage of the initiative. So that's sort of prescribed out. I think if you read through the code sections and you just sort of apply it logically to the situation at hand, a reasonable part of the report should be a comparison of the ordinance that the council passed that went through the referendum and this ordinance. I should say the ordinance is that the council passed, you've passed two ordinances. This initiative proposes to remove them both and replace it with one ordinance, one comprehensive ordinance. So that's a logical second part of the report. I think generally if there are other questions that the council, beyond that sort of baseline, might be interested in the staff incorporating, this would be an opportunity for you to give us some general direction. But ultimately, city attorney and the city manager designate will be responsible for completing the report.
One other question is the 9212. How is that communicated to the public? Or what's, you know, I mean, that's a report which would, you know, come, you know, in a meeting, but is it go any further, or does it go to the registrar of voters, or is there any other way to communicate?
It's the city's report, it's your report. I think the provisions in law that we're talking about were partly put in place to ensure that an initiative could not create a substantial economic burden for the taxpayer, that the taxpayer wasn't properly informed about. So I think its primary intent is for the agency to outline and publish well in advance of the election what those fiscal impacts are. I think also generally in the city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, if you thought an initiative, and that's not the case here, was literally going to bankrupt the agency, then you're in a different conversation. But that's not the case in this situation. So I don't know if you have anything more you want.
Yeah, I'll just add a few things. So since not every initiative necessarily has a direct fiscal impact, there are a number of initiatives that just relate to land use, zoning, growth control. And in fact, the city manager has two addressed, dealt with initiatives that had to do with wastewater treatment. There's a variety of things out there. So 9212 is not restricted to, the main focus is, as the city manager says, focused on fiscal impacts, but it does include the relationship between the proposed law and the city's general plan or other land use regulations, the impacts on housing, the impacts on open space, and the impacts on infrastructure, the ability to retain business and employment. And then it has a catch-all that says, any other matters, the legislative body requests to be in the report. So the focus, the first one is fiscal impact, so that's clearly the focus. And as the city manager says, the goal was to ensure that voters would have something available to them that attempted to provide information about those fiscal impacts, but the legislature acknowledged that there may be other topics, and they have the catch-all. That's basically for anything that the city council is interested in.
Okay, and sorry if I'm not completely getting it, but is this something that, you know, for example, in the voter information guide, is that something that can be submitted, or?
It is not something that would be included in the voter information guide. But, so we would come back to you, it would be a written report. We would come back to you and present it to you and provide a staff report. It is very typical for cities, once those are prepared, to write a page on the city's website where that information is available. Since it's pre, since it's information developed before the placement of the measure on the ballot, you know, the city can also make some effort to make the voters aware that that information is available to them as an independent educational effort that does not constitute impermissible campaigning under state law.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Andre?
Great. I just wanted to follow.
Great, I just wanted to follow on the city attorney's. Points, I mean, I I do think the fiscal impact here is potentially. It is important, but I also think equally important here are going to be some of the. Externalities of adopting an ordinance like this. And some of the factors or issues that you raised, I would be very interested in understanding. So for instance, what would be the impact of this type of ordinance on housing supply? On business activity, on property values, there are a whole host of. Of implications of adopting this type of ordinance that are that exceed just the the fiscal impact to the city. That would impact our community overall, and so I I would be very interested in. What you might be able to find in your research and it may potentially address that in this type of report.
I I expect the city manager will want to add to my response, but. You know, as councilmembers Candell and Paulson are aware, and I think Councilmember Andre, you were very, you were following this as well before joining the council. Staff developed a great deal of information around a number of of topics. That can be used to provide a summary, I think one of the lessons of all of that was that. You know. There continues to be debate about about many of those issues, but I think we can certainly put into a report. A summary of what we've learned over the course of that to sort of to to outline for for the council and for the public, what the potential implications are. Based on what we learned.
Great.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that. Or point out a common theme, and I know it frustrated Councilmember Paulson, is there's just a lack generally in the state of data. To substantiate arguments pro and against. This issue, and so. I I anticipate that where we to include in the ninety two twelve report. I think it'd be appropriate that we do sort of a summary of key issues that were raised. Throughout our exploration over a year. It's more of going to be summarizing that arguments were made, there's literature out there that argues both ways, but. There isn't a lot of concrete data that we can point to and say this. Definitively point argues one way or the other for some of those arguments.
Okay, I I understand what you're saying, but I'd also like to just point out that. Many other jurisdictions throughout California have had rent control ordinances for a very long time. And the data is available, I'm not saying that you need to parse through the data yourself, but I'm saying. It's a third party, nonpartisan research organizations have looked at this. And I I think it would be helpful if. We were able to include some of that information in the report.
Again, there were some studies that we published as part of our research. They're highly, I'm happy to include them by reference and attach them to the ninety two twelve report. But. I think you'll find that almost every one of these studies is in dispute about. How to interpret the information that's within them, so. And it's just not within your staff or frankly. One of the most controversial ones was done at the Hoover Institute, I have no reason to dispute that that's. An institution that has the resources to crunch crunch through a lot of information. And that particular study is very interesting, but there are multiple articles questioning. That study, we don't in thirty days have the ability to commission a. Our own study, so we're gonna have to rely on simply incorporating those elements by reference and. Pointing them out to the public and giving the public the opportunity to read them themselves.
I had one follow up question, you know, given the passage of measure D, do you feel you have? More baseline information on what, you know, the administration of a program like this might cost, you know, as you're dealing with vendors and. Slowly rolling in the the IT platform and looking at personnel and, you know, getting some feedback from the public.
That's a challenging question to answer because as we told you throughout the. Evaluation of this issue. I felt some of the most honest staff reports by other agencies that had taken up the issue of rent stabilization, rent control, eviction protections. Had acknowledged that it would take one to two years of implementing the program to fully understand the costs. With that said, in my preliminary assessment, it's clear to me that the resources we put in place. To administer our own ordinance will be inadequate to administer this ordinance. So one of my exercises for the ninety two twelve report would be to try to explain what I think that delta is between us.
Thank you.
Any other questions that you have? Any other questions? Councilmember, okay, so as this is a business item, do we just keep that at the dais?
You you open it up to the public.
Okay.
It's that's not a public.
It's not a public hearing.
Manage public comments.
But it's public comment, got it, okay, so. And with that, I will open this up for public comment. So anyone who would like to comment on this item, now would be your time.
I had a stroke recently, so, but um, I've lived in Larkspur for thirty two years. And every single one of those years, I've lived at Skylark Apartments. So one third of since the the town has been established, I've lived in this town. When I first moved there, I was I was paying eight twenty five for rent for a one bedroom apartment. Now I'm paying two hundred and two thousand three hundred dollars for the same apartment. I I've lived there in the the first ten years, the rent didn't even go up every year, it would go up every couple of years, every every. By the Pell family who managed the apartment at the time. And then in the last ten years, the Pells got involved in raising the rent every year. And then, of course, the new people that have bought the the complex, I don't even know the name of the corporation, but it's a corporation that bought the complex. They raised it at eight percent and then this year at seven percent, but they raise every single year. And I've seen probably fifteen people have to move out that I've known over the years and I've lived there for for, like I said, thirty two years. And these people were fixed income people, these are people that retired. You know, social security doesn't go up eight percent or seven percent every single year. Social Security doesn't even go up at all, it every now and then gets adjusted, but it does not go up seven percent every single year. So these people had to move out of the community, and I'm one of the people that's soon will have to leave Larkspur because of the cost. So even seven percent every year is a very difficult burden to 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 handle, especially now that I can't work because of the stupid stroke that I had. But it it really, you have to really take into consideration. There are people that have fixed incomes and there are people that don't have. A job that gives them a seven percent increase in salary every single year. When people don't get that much money added on to their salaries every year, but when their rent goes up. It goes from being like one quarter of of what you're making in a year to maybe more than half of what you're making in a year. And even higher, and that's then when it gets higher, those are the people that have to move out of the apartments. So, you know, I liked living here, I love Larkspur, it's an amazing town. But it's getting to a point because of the the raise of rent increase every single year. That I I won't be able to afford to stay here. So it that's the only reason I'm I'm standing here is I just want you to consider that, that there are people, not just me. That can't afford the seven percent increase every year because they aren't getting seven percent increase in their salaries. And their or their income that they use to pay their rent every year and. I'm kind of winded because of this wonderful thing that happened to me, but the point is that I I don't want to have to leave and. I hope you really think hard and long about the three percent increase. And how people can be able to still live in Larkspur. For for till they die. You know, for their life, instead of having to let move out, that's all. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
So think about that delta.
Thank you. Other comments?
Hi, I'm Dorothy Ulleria, live at Skylark. And I am a very hardworking member of the Skylark Tenants Association. In the last few months. I have had three good friends that have lived in Skylark for ten plus years. Be forced out of their homes. By seven percent rent increases. That are coming annually at infinitum. At one of the candidate debates, Ms. Andre, I remember you saying that you were in favor of high turnover of units. We've raised families in these units. We've gotten really sick and died in these units, I had a neighbor who died. A couple of doors down about two years ago. People live their lives. In these units, these are our homes, they aren't units. And you are our elected representatives. And we're asking you to move this forward. Please make our lives livable. Your, what you thought was a good idea of a seven percent cap, it's not five percent. Plus CPI because CPI never goes below two percent and we all know that. Five plus two equals seven. Your seven percent cap isn't safe. For many, over half of your constituents who are renters. Please, as our elected representatives, move this forward. We have had more than the required number of signatures to get this on the ballot. And your constituents want the opportunity to vote on this. Thank you very much for listening.
My name's Bob Mittelstedt. Lived in Marin for forever. I want to share just one story. My father was a minister. He, we did not have much money. When he retired, he couldn't afford to stay in the same community we lived in in Los Angeles. He had planned for that. And he decided he would have to move the family to a less expensive place that he could afford. He didn't complain about it. He didn't blame it on anybody. He didn't feel like he was entitled to have somebody else pay for him to remain where the family had been raised. He understood how economics work. He also knew that there was somebody else who could afford to move into our house. And that it was fair to them to let them move in if they could afford it and we couldn't. So as I say, we moved, life went on, and we did just fine. I think one service that the community can provide. Is to help people figure out where a less expensive place to live might be. Sort of to serve as a clearinghouse, a place where jobs are available, a place where housing is less expensive. I think that would be a great service and it would help people deal with what often is inevitable. And that is that because of retirement or some other reason, you no longer can afford to live where you would prefer to live. Just want to share that with you for perspective, thank you.
Hi, council members, my name is Jockey, I am a founding member of the Skylark Tenants Association and. I just want to point out that first I've missed this place, it's, we were here for seventeen months. We saw each other twice a month, every month for seventeen months. So I I I appreciate being back here under these, this, under the, you know. These condi- not conditions, under this concept. I don't know what the word is, but I circumstances, good, good, that's a good word, yeah, thank you, under these circumstances. They're good circumstances because we we talked about this last year. And first, I, it would be remiss of me to start this conversation by. Not honoring Kevin Carroll because he, we stand on his shoulders, he was here before we did, right? So Kevin started this battle. Councilmember Paulson, as you remember, in twenty nineteen, right? Of just making sure that. And my tears are tears of, because I know this was a fight he was in for such a long time. And I spoke to him on May nineteenth and he was willing, he wanted to hold on, but you know, to see the certifications, but he didn't, you know, so. I know he was with you, making, fighting to make sure measure D passed, right, because that was important, so. That's that's what you're feeling, so I I want to honor him and we stand on his really, really tall shoulders today, so give me just one second. But. You have all asked that you want to see the data, we are the data. We are the data, my neighbor just said that ten people moved out of Skylark. That he know, sorry, I don't know how many people he said, how many do you say? Ten, and I know about six that moved just in the last thirty days. One of them was a founding member of the Skylark Tenants Association. And he was born at Marine General Hospital. He ended up moving out of Marine County because he couldn't sustain another seven percent increase, he was not going to be able to sustain that. So he had to make a decision. Does he stay and knowing that there's a seven percent increase come, or does he go to a a cheaper place? Where, as the gentleman implied, you know, somebody else would rent his apartment. But I believe that society and community is here to take care of each other. And we're not asking for free rent, we're just saying we want something that is. Something that commensurates what we're paid or what social security pays us. And we, as anybody else who owns a home. As all of you are homeowners, the council members, we have roots in Larkspur. I have lived in Larkspur for the last seventeen years, in Greenbury and then in in across the creek in Larkspur. So we are the data, you don't need to look further, we were here for seventeen months and for seventeen months. Staff provided you with incredible data that you perused and talked about and discussed. Send it back to them, they gave you more data, so what we have done is the voters of Larkspur have have. Last September, I think it was August or September, we came to this this very microphone and. Councilmember Paulson, you were mayor at that time, and one of your closing remarks was that. If the voters want to put this on the ballot, I'll have no objections. So we're calling you to honor your word. Send this to the voters, we, the 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 message is very clear. We 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 have said very loud and clear that we we want this, and I'll just give you some numbers is. We collected a total of eleven hundred, one thousand one hundred and sixty six signatures to qualify. Out of those one thousand one hundred and sixty six signatures. Ten, one thousand and fourteen of them were verified. And that was over eleven point thirteen, eleven point one three percent of the the. Above what we were required to to send in, which was nine hundred and ten as 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 staff, as a. Mr. Schultz kind of communicated to you all, so what this is showing is that. We we started talking to folks, to our neighbors in February of this year. We thought we were going to need the whole summer to actually talk to them about this. But in just two months, we came back with enough signatures to actually be able to qualify. What's what is this saying, this is saying that there's an overwhelming support. And it sends a powerful message that residents of Larkspur, Larkspur are demanding an opportunity to vote for real rent control. What real rent control looks for us is a rent control that actually. Mirrors what it is that our cost of living is, we're not asking to live in these places for free. I've paid rent for fifteen years. I'm 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 not retired, I'm not on a fixed income. I work very hard, I spend my money at Rudeley, I spend my money at, you know, Left Bank, I spend my money at Pico, I spend my money in Larkspur. I've gone to many Larkspur Chamber of Commerce events, I I I'm a contributing person to this community. So we're not asking for handouts, that's not what we're asking for, we're just saying we we want to continue setting root here. So I say all of that to say that, as Dorothy, my neighbor, said, that. We're calling on you as our representative, as as our representatives, our elected representatives. To serve the best entrance, interest of your constituents. Listen to us. We came to this very podium and we said to you, seven percent is too high. And you, in your own words, said. That was the best that the five of you could do, but if you all can take it to the voters, let the Larkspur voters decide what they want to do with it. Well, the Larkspur voters have decided what they want to do with it, what they want is they want it to be on the ballot in November. And what I promise you they will do, they will vote. To make sure that over fifty three percent of renters who are. Who call Larkspur home will be able to continue raising their families here. That they won't have to move out if, in case they get a medical issue and they can't. You know, their income is not multiplied anymore, that we want to live here, we don't want to move out. We want Larkspur to be diverse, to be celebrated, to be, you know, a place where people can actually call home. So that's what we urge you today. And if there's any more data that you need, any details on the ordinance, we're we're, we've been working hand in hand with. Several different organizations, community organizations, ACE, who's a leader in this space, we're we're happy to answer those, but. But please listen to us. There's, there's no need for any more research. There's no need for any more studies. You did this for seventeen months. And you had an opportunity to actually pass an ordinance that the people were asking for. But you did not do that. So listen to what we're saying. What we're saying now through these signatures is we want to vote on it. You had your opportunity. Give us ours. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, thank you, New York. Let me, I know there's more people want to talk, talk. I just had a couple of quick comments. First of all, I, I just want to clear up any misunderstandings. This is going to the voters. Okay, that's not, we don't even have the authority not to let it go to the voters. Right? You, you got your signatures and you've earned your right to have it be on the ballot. You know, that's, that's not what we're talking about up here. So we're, we're looking for a report just for more information. Now that it's going to the voters, the voters are going to want to know what is the fiscal impact of this. So when they vote on it, they understand what they're voting on. So that, that's what we're really asking staff for. But that's, the, the issue is not whether or not it's going to the voters. The other comment, and I'm, I'm hearing about all the people that have been displaced, that have, because they couldn't afford the rent.
They've been forced out.
They've been forced out. I, I want to remind you that I was in a subcommittee that was trying to do a means tested program. So that the people who were on the, the edge and would potentially be forced out because they had fixed income, that they would have subsidized housing.
But it's not, it's not.
Hold on, hold on. But the Laxbury Tenant Association didn't want to do that, right? So the people who are getting, having problems paying their rent because they, you know, they, they're on a fixed income, they should take that complaint to the Laxbury Tenant Association and say, hey, why aren't I getting subsidized? And maybe the Laxbury Tenant Association can explain to them why the Laxbury Tenant Association chose not to go down that path. And, and maybe, maybe this ordinance will pass. Maybe it will. And we'll go, and we'll go to sixty percent of CPI and maybe that's what the voters will want. But there was, I was working very hard on an option to protect those tenants with fixed income, which was rejected by the Skylark Tenant Association. So I just want to remind people of that because that, that's, when, when people are saying, I'm on, I'm fixed income and nobody's helping me, they, they should go to the Laxbury Tenant Association with that complaint.
May I respond? So it's not just folks on fixed income, Mayor Candell, that are getting displaced. It's just that people cannot absorb a seven percent increase year after year.
No, I, I understand what you're saying. But those, those were the people.
So what they come.
New York, those are, those are the people that, that the, the subsidized, the means tested was supposed to help people who were in jeopardy of losing their housing because the income that they had was under a certain percentage of, their, their rent was over a certain percentage of their income. And they were at risk of being, of losing their housing. And those were the people that we wanted to help. And that was what was rejected by the, the Skylark Tenant Association, right? So.
Yeah. So, and what I'm saying, Mayor Candell, is that the people who've been, who've been displaced is not just people on fixed income. It's people who have to make a decision on whether they continue paying the seven percent increase or they move and they'll have an extra outing day for their families and their kids. Or they'll be able to go out for dinner or, you know, so it's, it's not just that. So I think you're misrepresenting that. And I think that's not fair. Because we, we spoke about it and we had public hearings of, about the two sides for seventeen months. And it is a fair, an unfair thing to say that they should come to the Skylark Tenants Association that we're responsible for that. What we said is that there's a lot of us. I, for one, cannot absorb a seven percent rent increase year after year, but I also do not qualify for the fund. I make more than the fund. There's many people who came up here and said that. So that is an unfair categorization because it's not just those people on fixed incomes.
Let, let, let's let, let somebody else say, I'm watching Mike. If there's more, more comments, okay? It's a business item. We're allowing public input. If you would like to give public input, you're welcome to. Sorry. And city manager.
I just thought I might remind the mayor and the council that the specific questions before the council are actually not about the merits of the initiative itself. But they're mostly procedural questions.
Okay, so again, this is going to the voters. Okay, so you don't need our permission to get this to the voters. You've gotten the signatures required, so it's going to the voters. Having said that, are there other public comments that you would like to make on this business item? Come on up.
Talk about this. It's more like a question more than a comment. Are mobile homes included in the, this, this part of the bill?
I would put that over to staff. It wasn't in the original, but I don't know about the.
Mobile home rent stabilization is its own portion of state law and requires its own set of ordinances. It's not covered by the current city ordinances, nor is it addressed by this initiative.
Okay, so that'd be no.
Okay, that would be no. Is there, one last one that's, is there anything that we can still do to put that in the valid or for voters to vote that in November? Can we add that to the?
I would posit that it's, you don't have the timetable to qualify an initiative for the November two thousand twenty-four ballot. You certainly could engage the council in your concerns about rent stabilization for mobile homes.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you so much. And just one other comment to people that have come here and asking that if we cannot afford to live here, then we can, we, we should move. We're just not numbers. We're people here. I live in the Marin Park home, Mobile Park home. And we have employees that work at Trader Joe's, that work at Bendmo, that work at Costco. We have kids that go to New Cummings, to Cove, to Tam High School, to Hall. So we all, all are, we are all a community. If some of our residents have to leave because they cannot afford their rent, there's like, there's going to be less students at the schools. There's going to be less work for teachers. I don't know. We have people that work at a, the Marine Water District, people that work for the Marine Parks. And they, they want to stay here. They want to be part of the community and they're involved. So I hope that the voters in November get to vote and help all these people stay here and be, continue to be in a better community. Thank you.
Okay, other public comments on this item? Come on up.
Hello, good evening. And my name is John Bor. I live in Bonnet Apartments. The same as Joki, you know, and our colleagues here told about all these things. You know, I'm not in a fixed income, correct? I work very far, hard for my money. I actually don't even work here because if I would work here, you know, in my, in the industry that I'm, I'm in, hospitality industry, I would probably not be able even to pay my rent, correct? So I work in a city. I have a higher manager job. Still, with that pay, I'm still, you know, cannot just, you know, that seven percent every year rent increase. I cannot. It's too much for me. You know, my kids stay out in Bay City. My kids, and can't, you know, believe here for, you know, it's, it's our fifty year here, but ten year in Marin County. And rent is just going higher, 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 correct? And it's, it's, it's too much. Think about the regular workers, correct? The gentleman just told you, you know, the ones that they are working at Trader Joe's. They are making probably eighteen dollars an hour. How many families they will have to live in a two-bedroom apartment to, to, can afford to pay the rent? It's just, it's just unbelievable. And I heard from Skylar that they have high, high rents. You know, Bonnet is the same. They are just raising the rent. When I moved there, you know, they were just moving, you know, forty dollars, fifty dollars. Last year it was seven percent, you know, a hundred and twenty. Every year just raising, 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 raising. It's cannot, you know, we cannot. We are not working in a tech industry. Most of these apartment complexes, they are regular workers, correct? That they are working in the same industries. They are serving your food. They are doing this. They are doing that. They're, you know, working in the stores. You know, most of our neighbors, they are workers. Regular workers. They are not tech hiring, you know, two hundred K or whatever like that. So we cannot just, you know, eat this seven percent every year. And thank you very much.
No, thank you. Other, other comments? Okay, seeing none. I will close public comment on this item. We have two things. I'm sorry, let me bring it back to council comments.
Yeah, I'll start. I mean, I, I, again, I want to thank everyone for coming out. We spent much of two thousand twenty-three on this issue. You know, I'll, I'll be the first to move the adoption of the resolution accepting certificate of sufficiency of signatures on the petition. So I, I think it was said, well, you know, this is a very important issue and it needs to be in front of the voters. And, and I think that's what we want to do. I also fought pretty hard, you know, to get some level of protection. And one of the lessons learned from the March campaign is, is the challenges of misinformation. You know, people were knocking on the door saying that I was supporting something that I wasn't. And, you know, there was a lot of misinformation. And so I'm really looking that the voter and the city and the council get as much information on what this initiative, which will be on the ballot, entails. And I don't think that should be a threat. I think, I think really the city will come together and listen to all your stories. I published a lot of on a website and hopefully make a good decision. So for me, I, I think calling for a ninety-two twelve is, is in the interests of the voter, all voters. Because, you know, even on Measure D, it was only a hundred eighty, a hundred eighty votes split between the two. And we can interpret that many ways. But, you know, my role and my duty as a city council member is to make sure that there's transparency, that there's thoughtfulness and that there's respect. So, so I'd like to see that report. And I'll, as I said, I'll be the first to, you know, move this along by, you know, passing the acceptance of the certificate of sufficiency.
Councilmember?
I also want to thank everyone who came out and spoke today. Thank you for your comments. I think this is a highly emotional topic and issue, as we all know. And certainly coming through the campaign, there are people who feel very strongly about this issue, frankly, on both sides. And I've met both tenants and property owners when I was out campaigning. I think Councilmember Paulson said it very nicely. I think our job is to lay out the facts and the comparison of what this current ordinance is versus what is being proposed. And while I think the headline number of the rent cap is, gets a lot of discussion and maybe that's all people pay attention to, I would highly encourage every voter to read what is being proposed in this ordinance. It's very long. There are many other details in this ordinance that go beyond just what the rent cap is. And I think in order to be an informed voter, I think that we need to encourage everyone to understand what exactly it is that they're voting on. And so I also would like to call for the ninety-two twelve. I think a comparison would be very helpful in helping people understand what the similarities, but also what the differences are in these two ordinances. And hopefully it will be in a nice summary format because this ordinance is very long. And I read through all of it. And there, there are some market differences between what was passed by city council versus what is current, what is being proposed. I, I fully agree that this issue needs to be voted on by the voters. And I said that consistently throughout my campaign. I think that this is an issue that touches everyone in our community. Whether you're a renter or not, it will impact you. And I think that every citizen has the right to express their, their opinion and viewpoint on this topic.
Okay. And, and finally, let me apologize. I think what you heard was my frustration because I was on the subcommittee for means testing subsidies to help people that really needed help. It was something I felt passionately about because I didn't want people to be losing their, their homes because of rental increases. And my proposal was rejected. And, and it was disappointing. And it was, I, I think it would have prevented some of the people who have lost their homes from losing their homes because they would have been, they would have qualified for the subsidies. And I'm frustrated that people have lost their homes, right? So I, I apologize and let my emotions get the best of me. But I, I, it bothers me. So we, we are where we are. And, and having said that, it seems like we will get a motion for approving the signatures and for asking for the report from staff. Can I get a motion from somebody on council?
I'd be happy to move that. So I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting a certificate of sufficiency of signatures on a petition and also ask for the ninety-two twelve.
Second the motion.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes. Okay. And that brings us to e-bikes. Coming back to our consent calendar. This was item four point nine on the consent calendar was moved as a business item. So can we get a staff report on four point nine from the consent calendar, please?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Shannon O'Hara and I'm the assistant city manager. So first off, we had a public comment. I would like to thank the person for submitting the comment. We always like to hear from members of the community. This item is related to the grand jury's report on e-bikes in Marin and the city's response to that report and its contents. We've had a, a long meeting tonight and I will keep my part brief since we had lots of other agenda items. For some context, the item that's on the consent calendar is a response to the report issued to the Marin Civil Grand Jury that was issued in April. So in the report, the city response only addresses what the grand jury has asked us to respond to. There's the findings portion of the report, which are the factual statements that they ask us to agree, disagree, partially, partially disagree with based on their research. And then there's the recommendations portions where the city responds to whether we will implement these recommendations either whole or in part, if it requires further study or if we feel that those recommendations that they've made are not necessary and for the reason why. So the public comment we received had some additional items about, additional items and points about e-bikes in the community. And I'd like to provide some additional context on the e-bike debate that's going on in Laxbury and throughout Marin. This response to the grand jury report is really an exercise in our duty to, to, to respond to the grand jury. It doesn't encompass everything that the city of Laxbury has done around e-bikes. So the Central Marin Police Authority at CMPA meetings, e-bikes have been a topic a number of times where we've had discussions. Additionally, at the management level in the city of Laxbury, the various managers in Marin have discussed different strategies as well as the situations, both unique in our communities and shared that are happening around the e-bike issue, particularly related to teens. This item, we could do a couple of different things depending on what the comment is. We have until July twenty-sixth to respond to the grand jury. So that is the hard deadline for us to respond or ask for an extension. Additionally, if the council would like to hear more about e-bikes generally, we can accept this report, send a response to the grand jury and, and agendaize a different item for some, for some convicts on e-bikes more generally. Does the city manager have anything to add or respond? It's late in the meeting, so.
I would just emphasize for the council, the grand jury report's highly prescriptive. We don't necessarily agree with their solutions. I would have preferred to see the grand jury highlight the problems and encourage collaboration between the jurisdictions to find solutions. Because the grand jury is so highly prescriptive, we don't necessarily agree with their specific recommendations for an ordinance. We have responded in kind. This isn't the vehicle, vehicle for a broader debate on how to resolve the challenges in our community of e-bikes. This is specifically to say to the grand jury how we are responding to their recommendations. And in fact, we've learned over the years that if we go too far astray. we've learned over the years that if we go too far astray from responding directly to the grand jury, they tend to kick it back to us because they want us to be very specific to what they're saying. So that's the exercise here. There's a lot of room here in the future and at CMPA for plenty of discussion about this challenge. I did speak with the police chief earlier this afternoon. He wanted to emphasize that he feels in terms of enforcement, California law is more than sufficient and in some respects much more impactful than what's proposed in the grand jury report because local tickets would be actually less and the ability to enforce and create consequence would actually be less than what he's empowered to do in state law with respect to riders. He has consistently emphasized there's a big problem about the fact that these are being sold at all and that the public is not being given the full information about what they're purchasing. And that's, we've tried to capture some of that in this response to the grand jury.
All right. Thank you for that. Bringing it back to the council. Do we have any questions for staff on it?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple. I'm trying to understand the police chief's comment. Is that saying to wait for state law? Or I'm not sure I understand the context.
I think what the chief would tell you is that the bikes in question are illegal under California vehicle code. So riding local ordinances may actually reduce his ability to take full advantage of the vehicle code.
Okay, thank you. And then, and then just specifically on the schools like Hall and Redwood. You know, this you know, probably isn't something, you know, to determine, you know, what to do about the specific Marin grand jury report, but just a little bit of a status update. I believe that there are a lot of the super 73s, for example, is that those conversations are moving along or what's, you know, what are we doing in that area?
The chief has taken a leadership role in engaging Hall Middle School and Redwood High School and options that the school can implement to deal with the various models of e-bikes that are not legal for those students to be riding to school. I can't comment for you today. I don't think this is actually an appropriate agenda item to put on trial. Chief Norton or Superintendent Gaitman or any of the people involved in those conversations. We didn't invite them here to have that discussion this evening about how we're going to wrestle with this. Again, we're trying to respond specifically to what the grand jury has proposed.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So when I initially read this, I thought it was odd that we agreed with the findings but rejected all the recommendations. And I felt that some of the recommendations were I thought some of them felt that they were common sense recommendations. For instance, recommendation one, where we I thought recommendation one was was reasonable. And I'm not sure why we would not want to implement something like that, just given all the commentary that we've heard from the public about e-bikes. It feels like the class two e-bikes are dangerous and we have a lot of teens under the age of 16 riding them. And so I'm not sure, and it seems like state law. I'm really not clear in terms of enforceability because I, I feel like if the, if someone is not supposed to be riding a class two e-bike, then why can't we do something about that? Or is that, or, and if if that's already the case, then the grand jury wouldn't be recommending that we you know, not allow people under the age of 16 to ride class two e-bikes. So I'm sort of like, I don't feel like there are currently regulations that really address this issue. And so I feel like the grand jury is trying to address this issue. And I felt that the recommendation was actually pretty reasonable, given all the commentary on what, what's actually been happening in, in our town or in Marin in general. So that's, that was my read on that was just recommendation one felt like it was it was a way to resolve this issue. And it was a very clear way because you either have a driver's license or not. So if you get stopped by a police officer, there's no, how old are you? It's show me your ID and can you legally operate a throttle, you know, vehicle? I mean, that's, that's sort of a bright line test, yes or no.
If I might interrupt, so a couple of comments. First, the specific recommendation is that you adopt an ordinance. And Chief Norton is saying, don't adopt an ordinance. Let us work through state law and through policies and, and working with our schools to address this issue rather than adopt an ordinance where local tickets are actually substantially less impactful than the vehicle code. Right now, if you're illegally riding a bicycle and you're exceeding the speed limit, you can get a citation from a traffic officer under state law. And he thinks that's a better solution. It's my understanding from listening to his presentations. I would want him to come and explain to you the legal issues around trying to just pull anyone over and guess their age and say, I've chosen to pull you over because I think you're under 16. But I've heard him give that talk. And it's problematic to just simply pull somebody over on that basis. So again, his concern that we mirrored in this and agree with is that we don't see the necessity to adopt this specific ordinance, the way the grand jury has outlined. And I guess as the city manager and my one opportunity to be editorial, and if some people heard me occasionally be editorial, I would not necessarily ever agree with the statement. Actually, I would never agree with the statement that because a grand jury wrote something, it is definitely correct because they do a good job, but they're like all of us, trying their best to put together a report. And they don't have the ability to interview every police chief in the community in Marin. They don't have the ability to interview every city manager. They don't have time to do that. They don't have the time to vet this. So they do the best job they can. And sometimes we agree with them and sometimes we don't agree with them about the actual way they want to implement things. There's highlighting problems and there's proposing solutions.
So let me, let me ask a question. Just want to understand the difference. So recommendation one, two of them said operators for class two e-bikes should wear helmets and all passengers must wear helmets. Now currently, the law is if you're on a class two e-bike and you're under 18, you have to wear a helmet and a passenger under 18. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, at this point, I think if you want to go into this level of debate, we should just postpone this matter over. I need to bring about five people here to engage this. I don't actually think this is an appropriate item for the conversation that you want to have.
Okay.
So I would say just push this over because staff view this as a simple response to the grand jury.
Okay.
And we misjudged apparently. But I also want to caution the council against using a response to a grand jury to address broader questions. It's a bad precedent because the grand jury's made very specific recommendations to you and is asking for very specific responses to what they've said. And when you start drifting into broader conversations, you're not doing it in the context of working with everybody that the grand jury's tried to address. And I agree with their proposal generally that we should all be getting together to try to solve this problem. And the chiefs are all getting together trying to figure out what to do about this problem.
Well, let me, I want to open this up to, to the public before I do. Is there any comments that you want to make before I do that?
Yeah, just, you know, trying to frame where we are right now. So I guess we had a consent item 4.9 and staff was recommending responses. And, you know, in the conversation, it's become clear that there's a certain amount of work that that needs to be done, you know, with the central police and so forth. And at the same time, I think, you know, councilmember Andre, I think our public and clearly myself, it's knocking on doors or being in touch with constituents is one of the biggest issues. So I'm trying to see what the best way forward for us is, you know, I think this item is an item. And to me, whatever happens to it doesn't change the broader conversation when we do with e-bikes. I just don't know how it fits in at the moment, you know, with us, you know, kind of closing this piece of business.
All right. Well, let me, let me open it up to the public and and hear, hear some perspectives. Go ahead.
Thank you. It's a sign of our dedication, Jonathan and me, that we're still here. I think if I had known that, I do want to say one thing, though.
You were a minister's son, right?
Yeah. We've been at this for six months. We started with this group, e-bike access to negotiate, advocate with the water district to allow legitimate class one e-mountain bikes up on town. And in the last year or so, we've got pushback. By the way, we're about to declare victory on that phase of our operation. But as part of that, we got pushed back from a bunch of community people who said, if you allow those old guys and women up there on their e-mountain bikes, the next thing you know, there's going to be a slew of these young kids on their throttle bikes and they're going to take them out. So as a retired lawyer, I took a look at what was going on. And I saw right away they're mostly the super 73s. And I looked at the law and the law says if you've got a motor on your vehicle, you're a motor vehicle, except if you fall into three classes of e-bikes. And only one of those classes is if you have a throttle, it's class two. But to be on the bicycle side of that line, the motor can't go over 20. And then I went on Super 73's website. Actually, the first thing I did was I asked a 12-year-old I saw riding a bike, how fast can you get it to go? He had a big smile on his face. 30, 35. I went into last mile Marin, East Francisco. Asked the salesman, I got a granddaughter, 12 years old, loves to go fast. How fast will this go? Does she know how to use an app on an iPhone? You know, we took it from there. And so I realized they were illegal. And then I got in touch with Dr. Matt Willis at the Marin Health. And he started publishing data showing that the accident rate for 10 to 15-year-olds, the very ones riding these is five times higher than any other age group. So we went on a campaign to visit people like you, school boards and all of that. We've been at this for five months now. And what we still get is we're discussing it. We're discussing it. We were very close to getting one school to have a registration program, which would give them the information they needed to say what's legal and illegal. And just before it was announced, they pushed back and they said, we've got parents who are upset that their $3,000 to $4,000 investment is going to be worthless. And, you know, we said, well, they've got a cause of action against Super 73, but there was, you know, they shouldn't be able to break the law and you know, basically aiding to bed a misdemeanor. You know, riding a motorcycle without a license is a misdemeanor. So to wrap this up, though, I think we're all on the same side. I didn't mean anything I said to be casting aspersions on anybody. I am the biggest fan of Chief Norton of anybody in the county. He was the first guy who said, I agree with you, Middlestead, Super 73s are illegal and I'm going to do something about it. So I'm, we're on the same side. I think what you should do, what I would suggest is you agendize this broader issue of what, you know, Larkspur and the CMPA can do and how soon they can do it to get the Super 73s out of the schools, off the streets. But on the grand jury report where you've got, you know, the time, time deadline, here's, here's the short of what I want to say. I agree that it's, the findings really should propel what you do on the recommendations. And the basic findings are class two e-bikes pose significant risk of safety to riders under 16. Under current law, and just to clarify one thing, under current law, kids of any age can ride legitimate class two e-bikes. It's, you know, it's not against state law to do that. Where it gets confusing is what's against state law is to ride something that's labeled a class two bike but exceeds it.
So, so hand, let me, let me ask a question on that.
Yeah.
When you say 10 to 15-year-olds are five times more likely in an accident using class two, are those legitimate class two bikes or those bikes labeled class two that may not be class two?
We don't know. It's probably all of them. And, and I think just to respond to it, this comes from the EMT 911 calls. And so they don't stop to ask what kind of bike it is. And I'm sure they're classifying Super 73s as the e-bikes. And I think it stands to reason that, you know, if, if the accidents are fairly evenly distributed over types of bikes and we know 50% of the e-bikes in schools are Super 73, Super 73s are responsible for at least 50% of the accidents.
Right. But I guess my question is, if class two e-bikes go at the same speed as class one e-bikes, right? They both can, can max out at 20 miles an hour. Are class two really that much more dangerous than class one? Or is it the fact that they can go up to 35 miles an hour that's actually making them dangerous?
For this reason. If you think about it, just as a matter of physics, and I'm no physics guy, but
Guilty.
When you have throttle, Super 73s can, can go zero to 20. It's just 20 in about 10 seconds. When I'm on my class one e-bike and I've got a pedal, I can't do that. So the acceleration on a class two e-bike, a legitimate one, is much, much faster. Torque is much higher. But the second one, once you get to 20, you can stay there forever until your battery runs out. When I'm riding my e-bike, I can't stay at 20. So they're much more dangerous. I was doing some research this afternoon after seeing the draft report. And there's one place that says that some accidents on the class two throttle bikes come when inexperienced people are hitting on the bike and they accidentally hit the throttle. You can't do that on a pedal system. Plus, if you're in a panic and you're going for the brake, you might hit the throttle. So for all those reasons, throttles are, are much more, much more dangerous. But here, let me, let me come to the, the heart of this. When I first heard about AB 1778, Damon Conley's bill that would, originally it was going to impose 60, minimum 16 age across the state for class two legitimate bikes. I told him that that's not the problem. The problem are these illegal ones. And we went back and forth, back and forth. Mary Sackett was very much in favor of Conley's bill. And then I sat down and I thought, wait a second. There, there's some genius in what they're doing. Because the genius is that Super 73, just to pick on them, they're not the only one, but they're the most popular. They're labeling themselves and they're selling themselves as class two. They're not, but they're selling, so it's class two. So when this law comes into effect, if it had been statewide, or if you all adopt this recommendation and then pass the ordinance, once you have the authority to do that, it'll say that you got to be 16 to ride a class two bike. Super 73 at that point isn't going to be able to say, wait a second, that doesn't apply to us. We're not really class two. We were just telling you that. If you're with me on that. So they're, they're stuck. This, this ordinance that the grand jury is asking you to adopt and AB 1778, if it passes, will authorize you to do it, will apply not just the legitimate class two bikes, of which I don't think there are very many. I think from my work, and I'm not supposed to say this, but I'll say it because I think it's important. I've gone around and counted bikes at schools for safe routes to school. And that data has not been made public yet. And I, there's an issue there. But, you know, half the bikes are Super 73s. This law will apply to them because they advertise themselves as class two. And what that will mean is that unlike current law, where class two and these other bikes can't be ridden, you know, they're going to be, be gone. Proof of that is I met this week with the owner of Last Mile Marin. You know, a charming New York guy who came out here and he's selling Super 73s and a Texas brand that's even worse. And his name's Brian Schwartz. And Brian told me, I'm going to go out of business if AB 1778 passes. And I said, well, why is that? And he says, well, I, I sell Super 73s and my main targets, my main market, he probably said, are kids under 16. And they won't be able to buy them anymore. And I said, well, their parents won't. And I said, well, wait a second. They're not really class two. You agree with that? He says, yeah, but we label them class two, so we're stuck.
So let me, let me ask her. So let me, let me ask her.
I wanted to provide some leeway, but the the topic of this item is the grand jury report. This is not agendized as a full discussion of e-bike regulation. It's it's not a clear divide under the Brown Act, but I would recommend that the council either refocus the discussion on the grand jury report or, as the city manager recommended, push this off to to another another meeting to to where it's agendized for a full discussion of the topic.
I can tell you why this is directly.
I'd also suggest that, you know, the council typically, you know, has a limit on the amount of members of the public to address the council as a public comment.
All right, so let me let me ask you to wrap this up. If you have one or two points, now's a good time for it.
The basic recommendation of the grand jury is to address the significant risk of safety to riders under sixteen from class two e-bikes by saying you got to be sixteen. The draft report offers two reasons against that. One is throttles are no more dangerous than regular bikes, so why are we treating them differently? We've addressed that. The second answer they give is there's another problem. The other problem is the illegal e-bikes. And so you ought to address that for two reasons. That doesn't hold water. One reason is that just because there are two problems doesn't mean you can't solve both of them or address both of them. But even more important, as we've been talking about, and that's why this does relate, you know, this this new ordinance that they're asking you to pass is going to address what they consider the real problem. And so I I think the recommendation, recommendation number one, pass the ordinance, I think makes a lot of sense. Obviously, you've got a procedure for that. But even more important, recommendation number two calls for calls for a to establish a joint task force or committee to investigate and consider coordination among county and municipalities about uniform set of regulations on e-bike use. Of course, there ought to be that. And the response says, recommendation will not be implemented because it is not warranted. Existing law is enough. And so I think I think this staff report's got that one wrong, too. And then the very last thing, in in the end of my email, we have our proposal for how to respond. And what we basically do is accept what the grand jury proposes and then go one step further. Say they the joint committee ought to consider more things along the lines we've talked about. It ought to be more inclusive in the membership, et cetera. Thank you. I know it's been a long time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let me ask, is there anybody else from the public who'd like to address council? Yeah.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Freeman and with Bob, I started the e-bike access about four years ago. Actually, Scott, you and I met, I think, before the pandemic. And just so Gabe knows, I grew up in Princeton, you know, Princeton, New Jersey. So, which says a lot, I'm sure. But here's here's the thing. First of all, I'm just really impressed with how informal and how you guys have discussions. It's just a breath of fresh air. And so I think it's it's fantastic that you have these discussions like this. You get a lot done that way. The thing I wanted to say was that I know a civil grand jury member and I spoke with her, her, him, them about it today. And they're very interested in our work, what we've done. And because our review was that it was a very accurate report. Bob's really become a an expert this or whether it's last year. I brought this to our group about a year ago. I got Damon Conley interested in, he knew nothing about it when I was talking about him. And then he was able to put the forth that law with Mary Sackett. And here's the thing, I think that a city has vested interest in the safety of its of its of its, the people who are residents. And the there was a report of, you saw the young woman who was injured. I work with a nonprofit and we work specifically with people with quadriplegia, people who cannot use their arms and or legs. And they are that way. About seventy percent of our clients are that way because of an injury. And we don't want any more clients. The the neck is much more vulnerable than the lower back. And so the context is terms of you have two old guys who are screaming in all these different schools, districts and and cities and towns to do something about the safety of our kids. Because we have that duty to be able to protect them. And this is something that is clear that we can do. And response to the the civil grand jury, I think, ought to be a bit sharper in agreement with what they put out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let me ask, is there anyone else, a public comment on this? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this, you know, it's not a hearing, the public comment portion of it. Bring it back. Let me lead our discussion here as it's getting late. I would, the only two things I think we have to choose between is to pass this as is or to bring it back for more information. And I would be happy with either. And I would look for council's comments, which you would prefer.
My preference would be to bring it back for more information. I wouldn't pass it as it is because I do feel that some of the recommendations probably bear a little more discussion.
Fair.
Okay, just a question of staff. So I I thought you said we have some time and our next meeting is on the seventeenth of June. And so if we were to agendize it, then we wouldn't miss a deadline.
I'm sorry, I I would bring it in July. I mean, just the questions tonight, I I'm not kidding. I need to bring about five people into the room to have the type of discussion. You have to bear in mind that if you don't, if you say you agree in any way with a grand jury recommendation, then you don't implement it. You start to go through a cycle for several years of having to explain yourself to the grand jury. Again, highly prescriptive that we're all going to hit this deadline and have this very specific set of regulations. Saying you don't agree with the grand jury doesn't mean not working on the e-bike issue. I just want to point that out. But if you're going to agree with these recommendations, I think we need to bring in the people to do the enforcement and give you a sense of the cost, the realities of enforcement. None of that's really explained in the grand jury report at all.
So so what I am hearing, Dan, you're suggesting is that, yes, we agree with the findings and that we should do something as a jurisdiction. But because of the time limits of the response and because of the commitment, if we were to agree with any of those recommendations, the, you know, the commitment that we've made to that, we need more time before we can commit to anything. And therefore, you're recommending we pass this as it is and pursue it on our own instead of committing to the specific recommendation that the.
I'm not recommending you pass it at this time without a minimum you have Chief Norton come. These are most.
This is on the consent item, you know, passing what you have, the answers that the city has already come up with.
Yes, again, because it's such a specific exercise. And I think, unfortunately, there are times when the grand jury issues reports that confuse the public in this regard, which is they've proposed specific solutions. That's distinct from identifying real problems. I would prefer, if I were on the grand jury, that the grand jury stopped doing that and they start saying that we want a solution and let experts do the solution. Because in this particular case, if you pass an ordinance that creates an expectation in the public that a certain way of regulating things is going to occur and the people actually go out and do the enforcement, tell you it's not a practical reality for us to enforce that law. We have a disconnect and we've created an incorrect.
Right, right, no, but I I think you and I are misunderstanding each other right now. So so you gave us your, the city's response.
To the grand jury.
To the grand jury.
And I'm hearing that you want it come back, which is fine.
Right, no, no, but what I'm saying to you is one option is to go with the city's response, which was already in here, which is on the consent calendar, and bring it back. Not not for this, not for the grand jury, but to bring back the e-bikes where we can have everybody come talk about it and we can do something on our own. But that way, we're not tied to the grand jury timeline. We're not tied to the grand jury recommendations. We can do as we see fit. But it's kind of a heads up, hey, guys, there's a problem with e-bikes. You should deal with it. And our response is, you're absolutely right, but we're going to deal with it as we see fit and maybe not the exact way it's prescribed by the recommendations.
Yes, but I actually think, having listened to all this conversation, that the letter should say what you just said. It doesn't really say it the way you just said it, which is actually a better way of saying.
Okay, so then we'll bring it back. Is that is that the?
Yeah, we have time.
Okay, okay. So let's, so is that we all on the same page? We'll just.
Part of this is, this is a real issue. And I don't, I'm not, this whole discussion is from staff is not intended to diminish this issue. You know, last time I was in the station, the guys, the the officers went out to deal with a crash on an e-bike. So it's happening all around us. It's very real. But again, when you open that broader debate, you need to be prepared to allow all sides in. And there are sides that don't agree with the some of these arguments and they need to be allowed to have their opportunity.
So so I guess my concern, though, is that we have a time deadline.
We'll make the deadline.
Okay. Okay, so do we need a vote on that since it's a business item?
Okay, you just deferred it.
Okay, perfect. All right. And then the last thing from the earlier agenda, which I can no longer push back, is agenda item two point one from the earlier meeting, which is twenty twenty-four city proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And since I am exhausted, I'm going to give this to Gabe.
Oh, thank you. All right, and I'm going to do the abbreviated form. But if I can just add a couple of comments, I I, you know, introduced this last year and I just wanted to take thirty seconds to say why I think it's important. I was going to bring a gun lock tonight. They were giving them out at the Memorial Day service. And and it turns out that about forty-six percent of the people here in Marin don't have gun locks. The guns aren't stored safely. And about fifteen percent of people in Marin have more than three guns. So, and you know, this is not a statement at all about gun ownership. It's about gun safety. And I I just, you know, again, these things are highly symbolic, but I really have worked with Superintendent Geitman. And I talk to everybody I can when I knock on doors where it's applicable. I think we just need to stay safe. So this is the twenty twenty-four city proclamation declaring the first Friday in June, which is coming to be the National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So whereas every day, more than a hundred and twenty Americans are killed by gun violence and more than two hundred are shot and wounded, seventeen thousand a year. And Americans are twenty-six times more likely to die from gun homicide than any other, you know, high income country. California has thirty-two ninety-nine gun deaths, about eight point two per hundred thousand. And it's costing us forty-two billion each year and about one point one billion paid by taxpayers. And whereas across the nation, including Larkspur, we're working to end this violence. And we do support the Second Amendment rights. Whereas mayors and law enforcement officers in partnership know their communities best. Whereas gun violence prevention is more important than ever before. Whereas in twenty thirteen, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed. I'm not sure why that was put in there. Be it resolved that Mayor Scott Candell of the city declares first Friday, June seventh, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And we encourage all citizens to support their local communities to prevent these tragic effects. Thank you.
Thank you for reading that and I will sign it. All right. And with that, we adjourned.